All right, I'm calling to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. Clerk Bolden, would you please call the roll?
I intended to, my apologies. Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
And Daly?
Here.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of the land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress of Indiana, and specifically in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home, too, and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Next, I will summarize our agenda. We have four sets of minutes for approval tonight from previous meetings. We then will move to reports from council members, reports from the mayor and city offices, where we will have a report from the Environmental Commission, and a report from city clerk Nicole Bolden. We will then move on to council committee reports, where we have a report from the sidewalk committee, and then reports from the public. That's the first opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. We will then move to appointments to boards and commissions, if there are any, and then legislation for second readings and resolutions, where we have Resolution 2024-09, a resolution expressing support for the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation, application for fiscal year 2024, Section 5339B funds for design and construction of a LEED-certified climate-resilient administrative operations and maintenance complex. Resolution 2024-10, to approve of a 2024 budget for the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board of Managers, that's the CIB for the Convention Center project. Then we move on to Ordinance 2024-03, to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding technical corrections set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code Title 20. And we have three other ordinances related to corrections or amendments to Title 20, the Unified Development Ordinance. Those are Ordinance 2024-04, 05, and 06. Then we will move to legislation for first readings, and we have Ordinance 2024-07, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a 138.51-acre property from planned unit development and residential medium lot to planned unit development, and to approve a district ordinance and a preliminary plan in regard to South Weemer Road, Sudbury Partners LLC petitioner. Then we will have an additional period of public comment on items not on the agenda. We will review items related to the council's schedule, and we will adjourn. So we have minutes for approval?
I move that the council suspend the rules and consider the minutes listed for approval this evening in the ordinary course of business.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Stossberg, would you like to just briefly explain again why we have to do this?
Sure. The minutes listed here, three sets are from 2003, so those are quite historic minutes that have been found by the clerk and are presented as they were, as they were found in the clerk's office. If the clerk would like to enumerate that, that would be fine. And then the 2023 minutes, the majority of current council was not present at those meetings, so we need to suspend the rules in order for this body to approve them.
All right, any questions on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I move that the minutes from May 7th, 2003, July 9th, 2003, August 6th, 2003, and November 1st, 2023 be approved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that those four sets of minutes be approved, and I believe there was a small correction made to the minutes of November 1st, 2023. Is that correct?
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other corrections or questions? Councilmember Stossberg?
I realize that I had a couple of corrections on that, too, that I forgot to mention. One of them, and I don't know if the ones that are already corrected is included in that, but one of them is the B square was BE and then square instead of just the letter B.
For the B-square bulletin, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, that's no big, dumb, just teasing. I'm happy to make that correction.
Right? I mean, it should just be the letter B, right?
I believe it's just a B square.
That is true.
Yeah.
Can you tell me what page that is on, and that way I can make sure the correction's done?
That is on page 14 of our packet. It's, where did it go? It says, it's under Councilmember Sims' report.
Okay. I will make that correction. If you all are willing to go ahead and vote on those this evening, it will actually be printed with that correction.
And then there was another, another small typo under public comments. It's on page 15. Jordan, Canada, the last sentence there, "He urged council pause the process." I think it should be, "He urged council to pause the process," just as a, I don't know if it really matters, but, and I don't know what the other correction was that was referenced earlier.
Can you read that again for me?
The sentence says, "He urged council pause the process." He urged council pause the process. So I think it should be, "He urged council to pause the process."
The use of the preposition, the preposition phrases are very important.
Okay. Just, I'm tracking it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all. That's all.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So Clerk Bolden, you would make those two small changes?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. It was in my comments. All right, any other comments or questions about these minutes? All right, there's a motion to approve these four sets of minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Clerk Bolden.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to reports from council members, and I will start on my right with Councilmember Flaherty. Do you have a report this evening?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes, hello. Just one quick report. On April 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00, location TBD, Councilmember Daly and I will be co-hosting a grieving session from 5:00 to 6:00, just to give people a chance to talk about, you know, how different comments affected them last week. And from 6:00 to 7:00, we will transition into kind of a call to action and discuss on a community level how we can do better. So if you're interested in one or both, we would love to have you, and hopefully next week, we will have more details on the location. But we would love to have all of you join us, council members included. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I'll make mention of a report that I'd like to make in the future about the requirements of developers to plant native flora on their development sites. This was a rule that was put in place, gosh, a decade or more ago, 15 years ago, and we have a list of plants. Those plants may be planted, but they may die, and they're replaced by non-natives, and they're replaced by non-native invasives. So in some cases, I see fountain grass, and I see eonimus, and I see other types of things that tend to escape and then just colonize the city native or wild areas and so forth. So I think that we need to have an investigation of this and really look into it. I'm glad the chair of the Environmental Commission is here, because she most certainly would be interested in it, because I think that what we need to do is do an assessment of all the properties that have been approved in, say, the last 10 or 15 years, especially the larger ones, of course, and see exactly what is, what's there, and if it needs to be replaced. So I'll give an update in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. On my other side, Councilmember Daly, do you have a report?
I do. Thank you very much. So I did announce last week that I was having a constituent meeting on April 25th, but as Councilmember Zulik just reported, that's being changed into our other event, so I figured that took precedence over a general constituent meeting, but I will be rescheduling that so that we can have conversations about other things as well. And then on that note, I just also wanted to briefly address last week again. I know we've all been fixating on some of the hateful, horrible things that happened last week, and I really don't have an appetite to dwell on it. But, and as certain as I am that such disturbing and hateful displays are rare, I really don't want to see us get caught flat-footed again by such behavior. And I'm not just referring to the Zoom comments, but also some of the people in the chambers who were, for example, giving thumbs-down gestures to speakers that they didn't agree with when they were visible on camera. And I was upset by those actions in the moment, and I'm very regretful that I didn't call them out then and there, so I, I am regretful for that, and I am sorry that I didn't say anything. I do understand that Zoom makes our meetings very accessible for all, but I would love to have discussions on maybe what we can do to, how we can react or limit vitriolic speech, such as the hate speech that we saw last week. I don't expect any more drama this week. I'm sure it's going to be very smooth sailing, but in the event that we do have to sit through more comments until we can possibly change procedures, if that's what we end up being able to do, at least as a message to the community to let you all know that I reject the speech, I will turn my back to send that message, and I invite my fellow council members to do the same with me. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to read a little bit from a recent article on the Supreme Court taking up a case on whether or not people can be punished for sleeping outside when they have nowhere else to go. This is very relevant here in Bloomington and a lot of other cities across the U.S., because we have laws on the books that do make it illegal to sleep outside, whether or not you have a place to sleep. And so we did try to ask this question a couple of years ago with an ordinance that we brought, but it was, it was really never answered. Where can people sleep if they have nowhere to go? Where can they legally sleep? So it seems like the Supreme Court might be weighing in on this soon, at least whether or not it's illegal to punish them for being outside. So cities all across the United States have been increasingly passing laws that punish people who are forced to sleep outside each night due to a lack of available shelter and extreme housing shortages. The Supreme Court will soon decide if doing so violates the Eighth Amendment's prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment in a case that arose out of Southern Oregon and is arguably the most significant case on homelessness in decades. The ACLU's, someone from the ACLU is explaining it in a Q and A in this article. So a little bit about how it came about, in 2019, there were at least 600 unhoused people in Grants Pass, Oregon. The city's response was to pass a law making it illegal to sleep anywhere in public at any time, and they sometimes call this camping bans, where you really just, you can't be in a tent or anything like that. And even bedding was considered camping, I guess. So the punishment for this crime was hundreds of dollars in fines, which would quickly escalate to a sentence of 30 days in jail. Grants Pass started fining and arresting unhoused people under these laws, even though the city had zero accessible shelters for adults. And so it is a little similar to Bloomington, just that we have shelters, but a lot of times we have no available beds. We don't have a shelter that allows pets, and there are many unhoused people with pets. And then we have some shelters where you have to potentially follow or believe in a certain religion to be there, or you have to be, you have to hear about religion if you're there, which can make people very uncomfortable. So this is pretty exciting. I think that basically two lower courts already said this was cruel and unusual punishment, and now it will be going to the Supreme Court. So it was the Ninth District Court that called it cruel and unusual, and if this does get dubbed cruel and unusual, I think we will have to take a look at our laws and potentially allow people to sleep outside or find places where they can legally sleep. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much. First off, I have a, an announcement that on the 27th of April, I'll be co-hosting a joint constituent meeting. We're actually going to make this a town hall. It's going to be co-hosted by State Senator Shelley Yoder, Mayor Kerry Thompson, Councilwoman Jennifer Crossley, and myself. Everyone is invited, if you live here or nearby. Again, I started the, my term on city council saying that we were going to work meaningfully towards creating stronger relationships across government so that people can engage with all of their elected officials in meaningful ways, and I will be reporting out what we do in this meeting, because I've been told that otherwise Dave Askins will do so at the, at the stand. Beyond that, I would just like to add, in acknowledgement of some of the statements that, that were made here by Councilmember Zulik and Councilmember Daly, we say in our land and labor acknowledgement that we move forward knowing and acknowledging that our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past. And for many of us, and for us here, our complicated and painful past includes things that have happened over the last week. And it brings to mind the fact, the scriptures say that blessed are the peacemakers, those that work towards bringing communities together rather than tearing them apart. The famous peace studies professor Johan Galtung said that our emphasis, our focus constantly needs to be on minimizing violence in any way in our society, and he defined violence in the broadest sense possible. He said that any action that would inhibit the potential of human beings, whether it be physical, mental, emotional, that keeps us from being everything that we can be. He says that that gap between where we are now and where we can be is violence. And, and he points out that there's underlying violence in society that leads to the manifestation of violence. And the point that I'm trying to make here is that too often, when these type of things happen in our community and in our society, we react to the manifestation of this violence. We react to the manifest hatred. We, and, and, and what I'm asking us to stop doing is focusing on the manifestation of violence and start again focusing our minds on the systemic injustices that lie underground, right? Because every single time that you react to the manifest violence, you make it as though it is the, what you're validating is the idea that this is, that this is the exception and not something that some of us are having to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And so the work that we do here is fundamentally focused on dealing and addressing deep-rooted issues in our community, whether those be inequalities, whether those be bias, whether that be just simple, the fact of, the fact that many people are living in poverty, et cetera. And we really need to start focusing on, on that broader thing and not get sidetracked by the existence of manifest violence in our society. So again, in encouragement of the work that all of us are doing and the powerful words that I think were shared last week and hopefully will continue to be shared, let us focus on, on the big goal here rather than, rather than getting sidetracked by the manifestation of terrible violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to announce that I, too, have a constituent meeting coming up on April 20th at 11:00 in the morning. That is a Saturday morning at 11:00, and it will be here in City Hall, next door in the McCloskey Room. And the farmer's market has now started in the showers parking lot on Saturday morning, so you can do a twofer and go to the farmer's market and stop by and say hi. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And as far as my report, I do want to reflect on last week's council meeting. As has been acknowledged, there were several public comments that included racist, anti-Semitic, bigoted, hateful language that was very disturbing to all of us on the city council and others in the room and joining us online and in the community as a whole. As president of the city council, I want to apologize for not speaking out against these comments immediately. I do not have an excuse. I think the reason I didn't speak out was that I was so shocked that I just fell back on our council procedures and just moved on. I didn't know what to say. These are probably the reasons why I acted as I did or failed to act, but they are not excuses. I shouldn't have been shocked, because I was warned ahead of time that an item on the agenda would be used as an opportunity for hate speech. I should have been better prepared, and I wish I had acted differently. In this context, I would like to remind everybody that the city council passed Resolution 20-06 in 2020 entitled "Denouncing and Condemning White Nationalism and White Supremacy." It was largely authored by Councilmember Jim Sims, and it reads in part, "The Indiana State Constitution states that, quote, 'No law shall be passed restraining the free exchange of thought and opinion or restricting, restricting the right to speak, write, or print freely on any subject whatever, but for the abuse of that right, every person shall be responsible.'" So that kind of points out the freedom of speech that we are required to uphold, but also the responsibility of individuals. The resolution goes on to say, "As documented in the city of Bloomington comprehensive plan, our community welcomes all. There is a multiplicity of nationalities, races, cultures, ethnicities, religions, abilities, ages, sexual orientations, gender identities, and economic statuses. We derive our strength from this diversity, which we celebrate and embrace, and commit to ensuring the inequities of the past are not a part of our future.'" And then we go on to say in this resolution, "The city of Bloomington condemns all forms of bigotry, racism, and hatred. The city proudly stands for individual dignity and against all those who would seek to propagate hate, fear, and intimidation, or incite fear and violence, targeting any human being. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Bloomington denounces and condemns hate based on racial, social, and cultural bias, and holds up values of peace, respect, inclusivity, and equity. The city is committed to continue pursuing policies and directing appropriate resources to ensure civil and human rights are protected and afforded to all individuals." And I'm sure I speak for my colleagues that we still uphold this resolution that was passed almost four years ago. Concerning the processes of the city council and especially around public comment and hate speech, I think that this will be a topic that will be discussed at our next meeting of the Special Committee on Council Processes, which I chair, and that meeting will be April 18th at 6:00 p.m. I think we'll go over that at the end of this meeting tonight. So it is definitely something that, that we are concerned about, and I think Clerk Bolden will have some recommendations for us tonight as well. Aside from that, I do have a constituent meeting this Saturday at 11:00 a.m., April 13th. It is via Zoom, and you can find the Zoom link on the city council website, so bloomington.in.gov/council. There'll be a calendar there and a link. So that's it for council member reports. We will move on to reports from the mayor and city offices, and...
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
May I interrupt for a moment? Councilmember Asari, you announced a town hall and a date, but do you have a time and a place as well, please?
It's 10:00 to 11:30 in the big room in the library. What's it called, the, what do you call it?
Auditorium?
Auditorium, thank you. Yes. The big room.
Thank you.
10:00 to 11:30, April 27th. Everyone is welcome.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to reports from the mayor and city offices, and we have a report from the Environmental Commission, an annual report. I believe Carrie Albright, the Environmental Commission Chair, is here. Welcome.
Well, hi there. Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to talk about what the Environmental Commission's been up to over the last year, and I'm going to strive to work this little device effortlessly. But what you can see on the slide is a picture of the Environmental Commission in 2023. A lot of enthusiastic folks from different backgrounds and experiences committed to pursuing a stronger environmental quality for our city and our citizens. And these are the folks who are really responsible for a lot of what we did last year. So what I'm going to do is talk through our priorities for 2023, what those look like, and then a little bit about what we're planning for this year to come. And I'm happy to answer questions as you have them throughout or at the end. So just as a reminder, the mission statement for the Environmental Commission is to advise the city of Bloomington on how its actions and policies may preserve and enhance the quality of Bloomington's environment, including the life-supporting processes that natural ecological systems provide to humans and other organisms. So at the beginning of every year, we have what we call our bucket list meeting. We get together and brainstorm on what our priorities can be for the coming year, and through discussion and ultimately a vote, we come up with just a few that we really want to make our primary topics for the year to come. So at our 2023 bucket list meeting, we came up with the priorities of promoting our Habitat Connectivity Plan and a few specific ways that we would do that, revamping our outreach programs and activities through the community, and some specifics there. We also came up with the idea of creating or sponsoring a volunteer event for the public and, as well as providing recommendations and reporting on environmental quality in the city. And there's an asterisk next to that third bullet point, because shortly after we came up with this, the commissioner, who is sort of leading that effort, had to resign from the commission. So we've tabled that, but we do have some exciting things planned for this coming year. So we really focused on the three remaining items. So the Bloomington Habitat Connectivity Plan is a product of our biodiversity working group, and you can see there's a QR code there, there's a URL, and there's also sort of a screen grab of what it looks like. And really, this is a tool that we've created to engage the community in understanding what value green space in our city can have. So Bloomington has three large habitat zones. There's the Griffey Lake, there is Clear Creek, and there's Jackson Creek. But in between those green spaces, there is fragmentation that keeps wildlife and native plants from naturally migrating, reproducing, and thriving across those different areas. So our goal is to create a corridor through typically privately-held land that's committed to natural landscaping, native plants, and, and further promoting the, the growth and the movement of wildlife safely. So through this tool, our, our hope and our expectation is to engage the community in adding to this map their location and some notes about what they're doing to help promote this connective corridor. So our goal is not only to create sort of a visualization of what these green spaces are, and there's different filters you can put on it to see what the green spaces are. These yellow circles are where we see the biggest gaps, and you can see some of the different markers of, of folks who've, who've logged their, their locations. But the goal is really to create a visualization of what we're doing to create a larger connected corridor for the betterment of wildlife, of native plants, and that enriches our biodiversity in this area, it strengthens the ecosystems here, and ultimately is going to help Bloomington in its effort to mitigate some of the impacts of the climate crisis that we know are going to be pressing our community down the road. So this is one of our top priorities, and one of the things that we do in our outreach events is work with community members on understanding this, as well as making the tool a little bit easier to, to use. There's a bunch of materials on how to use it, how to access it, and so we're really trying to get this more deeply embraced by the community. And this ties into our second priority, which was revamping our outreach programs and our activities. You can see on the left, this is an image from Bug Fest in 2023. activities. You can see on the left, this is an image from Bug Fest in 2023, where we really focused on teaching community members, particularly kids, about the impact of insects on our surrounding ecosystems. Some were native, some were invasive, and we just gave them a chance to have a literal, hands-on experience with some of these specimens and talk about the role of pollinators in our environment, of native plants in that process, and that sort of conversation. And on the right, you can see this is us at the Master Gardeners Fair, where we had materials about native plants, about deer-resistant plants, about composting, ways people can be more in touch with enriching their own private land and larger Bloomington community. And so part of what we did was these outreach efforts and also renewing some of the materials that we had that we could actually hand out to the communities that could take home with them. The other piece of our outreach is our annual Eco Heroes art contest. So in 2023, the theme was Let It Grow: What Trees Give Us. And following COVID and all the things that came with that, we've been really excited to kind of get this program back up and running again. And last year, we had 30 submissions across school-aged children, middle schools, high schools, and adults. And we had submissions that were pieces of visual art, poems, videos, songs, all sorts of different expressions that talk about the relationships that we can have with trees. And then we had our Eco Heroes ceremony where we, you know, awarded them certificates and prizes. And we're currently accepting submissions for this year's Eco Heroes. The theme is Drops to Drains. And it really focuses on the role of stormwater management in our city. So helping people understand they know the value of water in the big sense, but really getting a closer understanding of where stormwater comes into the picture in protecting our local environments, the biodiversity, and those active ecosystems that we're working through, all of our different creek systems and waterways, and expressing that again, through art. So there's a QR code for that, there's a URL for that as well. We're accepting submissions through Friday for anyone in our community. And children, of course, are more than encouraged. And then we'll recognize the winners at the Earth Day Celebration at Switchyard Park that is on, I believe, April 20th. And they'll get certificates, as well as we have over $2,000 in sponsorships and donations for the prizes. So it's really exciting to get some great support from the community and engagement from folks who want to talk about their connection with the environment. And then the third priority that we have is providing recommendations and reporting on environmental quality here in the city. So for that, we do provide recommendations and guidance on changes to the UDO, development proposals that are coming through the plan commission. We take a look at those and offer memos on where we see either environmental concern or opportunities for those different developments coming through. So that's part of what we do. It's a really important part of the way that we interact with our larger city government. We also support environmental priorities throughout the city, including providing some letters of support to our urban forester, who is seeking out grants to be able to widen our tree canopy, as well as remove some of the invasive species that are impacting our community, particularly those of marginalized or underserved areas of Bloomington. And then lastly, is our 2023 air quality report, which I believe Commissioner Matt Caldi came and spoke to you about. But if you're unfamiliar with it, this is a screen grab of one of the pages of the report. And it's mainly an overview of the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, and then zooms in on where Bloomington stands for that. So basically, the report reveals two specific points, which is the particular, so the PM 2.5 is a reference to particulate matter of a certain size. It's the teeny, teeny, tiny kind that can get deep in your lungs and really cause a lot of harm to humans. And so we measure that to make sure that the air that we're breathing is healthy. And in Bloomington, the 2022 report recorded us at 30, the average, as an average for the previous years as well. 50 is considered good. So Bloomington is in a good, healthy space, which is fantastic. We also measure the ground ozone, which comes from emissions. And it's also harmful for humans, but it's also really bad for vegetation, particularly in the growing season and when it's really hot. And so that number is something we look to as well. And again, it ranks around 34, which is also good, which means we can feel good in Bloomington about the air that we're breathing. But it is important to know that this is something to keep a very close eye on. As climates are changing, the temperatures are becoming more extreme. And so the recommendations in this report are to, one, accelerate our efforts to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. And a lot of that ties into what we see in the Bloomington Climate Action Plan, which is fantastic. There's a huge emphasis on transportation and energy. So it's really exciting that that aligns really closely with that. And then also thinking about where we are monitoring our air in Bloomington, how many locations of monitoring, and where to ensure that we're understanding the distribution of air quality around the city and not just in one or two spaces. So that's important to understand what different parts of our community are experiencing different levels of air quality. So this report's available on the EC's webpage under Reports. We have lots of reports there, but this is our newest one. And it does really give a nice overview of where we're at as a city, which is in a decent spot. And then this year, we did our bucket list meeting again. And it turns out, we've got some new commissioners this year, which is really exciting. There's a lot of energy about outreach and connecting with the community, connecting with the city government, connecting with schools and different organizations. So our biodiversity working group, which is the one behind the Habitat Connectivity Plan, is still a top priority. And we want to continue bringing that to different events and actually having it set up so people can go in right then and there and add their locations and really fill out that map. We want to include a heavier focus on pollinators and native plants and that relationship, because pollinators are important, but the native plant matching to that is actually incredibly important for those native pollinator species. And then also creating more and also updated educational materials that we can hand out. We find that being able to provide people with materials that they can read or reflect on is helpful in getting them to put those actions into motion. And then our outreach programs and activities, again, there's a lot of enthusiasm for connecting. So it's exciting that we are already doing Eco Heroes, Bug Fest. We did a weed wrangle with MC Iris that I know we're excited to revisit again. But also engaging with other organizations, including the city, but also community groups and schools that have, and IU as well, that have overlapping interests in these environmental quality issues. That's something that can sort of lift all of us in our efforts. And again, as the climate crisis is becoming more and more of a reality, it's important that we understand how we can all support each other. We also want to support and drive momentum for the Climate Action Plan. I mentioned that we are looking at that. That's something we're digging a little deeper into in these coming months and finding opportunities for us to get more engaged with supporting the city and the organizations behind it, as well as the community. And then lastly, we've been around for a really long time, but we know a lot of people don't know about us. We just resurrected our social media page. We're trying to find more ways to engage with the community besides just going to all sorts of tabling events. So we're looking to get more engaged with local media, like the newspaper, the radio, folks on IU campus, creating more of these reports. We've got another one that's sort of in the works for this coming year, but really work to increase the ways that we are showing up in our community, because what we are all working towards, we're so passionate about. And it's something that the more others can learn and build that passion for themselves, the healthier a city we're going to have. So that's what the Bloomington Environmental Commission's been up to and what we're looking towards for the rest of the year. But I'm happy to take any questions you have and appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thank you very much, Ms. Albright. Are there any questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a great presentation. My, I have lots of questions, but I'll limit it to one predominant one, which is, I really appreciate the Wildlife Corridor planning that you're doing. And I'm sure you're cognizant of the Deer Task Course Report, and there is data on that dated, but I assume that the deer still cross predominantly in certain areas. And that's something to be considered, because they've already chosen, I guess, corridors themselves that they prefer. So, and I assume there'll probably be signage and that sort of thing. I think it's a very good thing, because it's good for wildlife, but it's also good for human hazard, cars hitting deer, and so forth. If you know where they're going to cross and you have a good idea, you can slow down or we could warn people. But my question has to do with, I know that the commission is very interested in the biodiversity of our city and increasing that biodiversity. Deer, unfortunately, overabundant deer, have the impact of reducing biodiversity. In fact, they're probably drivers of invasives, because they clear niche space and that's occupied then by aggressive non-natives. So I guess my question then is, I think that this needs to be considered too by the commission. How can we increase biodiversity in the city when we have overabundant deer that, you know, you can plant natives that are resistant, but that's a pretty small palette. There aren't many. And you're leaving out a lot that would be beneficial for food and pollinators and so forth. So does that jive pretty well with the considerations on your commission in terms of increasing biodiversity equals consideration of deer number, and hopefully urging the administration, as I've tried to do for the last 13 years, to take it seriously, that this is an administrative responsibility? The council can't do it. It's up the administration to do it and come up with a plan and act on it. So what do you think?
Yeah, well, I appreciate the thought process there. And that's something that we talk about in the commission as well, is kind of the status on what is happening with the deer population as well. And so in thinking about building out the Habitat Connectivity Plan, part of it is, yes, understanding that deer are one of the species that are thriving in greener spaces, and that that's a consideration to make. And it's also knowing that it's about lots of other species as well. And so knowing that the emphasis of building out these green spaces is for other kinds of mammals and insects and birds and things like that. But to your point about understanding about the deer population, that is something that, as complicated as it is, our goal is not to specifically increase the pathways for deer populations to move through neighborhoods more effectively or anything like that. It's really more about all the supplemental species that are also going to benefit from all of that.
Yeah, I agree. That's going to be a concern, though, is that you're establishing a corridor in my backyard, but I'm already having trouble with deer. So it's got to come with some sort of reciprocity in terms of considering that for people gardening. Doesn't have to be necessarily natives, but food gardening and so forth. So, and here I'm talking about just simply addressing the population. Doesn't have to be lethal, because the science has evolved and we could address it in other ways, non-lethal approaches. But something I think needs to be done in order for this to be effective. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Other questions for Ms. Albright? Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I also want to follow up a little bit about the Habitat Connectivity, because I've been trying to look at this map that's online. And I appreciate these maps. And Bloomington has a lot of these maps, and they're really kind of cool. But I am not always able to find the key for them. So I would really appreciate some understanding about the green areas versus the red areas versus the circled in yellow and what those, I mean, the green areas, I guess, are kind of maybe sort of self-explanatory in terms of maybe they're already like existing corridors, but the red ones especially are the ones that I'm wondering what they mean.
Sure. I appreciate the question. It can be a little overwhelming just because there's a lot going on. And within the webpage, there are a couple of different documents that actually walk through what all those different pieces are. So it's more of like in one of the PDFs that you can see some of the indicators of what the different pieces are. But generally, it's where we see gaps, where we see opportunities, and where the green spaces currently are. So the red is where we're not seeing as much consistent green coverage.
Okay, so, because like, I mean, the red spaces can be very small in some ways. And so those are areas that we want to work on?
Yeah. And when you see the yellow circles, those are kind of like the main areas to focus on. But yeah, the red areas are the areas where we, it's basically saying there's a lot of space that doesn't have a lot of that green presence as far as confirmed, like native plants, natural landscaping, things like that, or those like established larger habitat zones.
Okay, so maybe some of those red spaces are highlighting specific areas of invasives? Could that be a possibility for some of them?
I'm not sure about that, but it sounds like, if nothing else, maybe some more clarity on how the map works and maybe even within the map interface itself might be helpful.
Yeah, that would be helpful, at least for me, because I really like maps, but I also like understanding what they're signifying. So, thank you. And I guess I'll go ahead and say, I live in one of the yellow circles. And so I'm kind of like, what does that mean about what I should be doing personally? And so like coming at it from that angle, not necessarily sitting up here, but being a resident and going, oh, I like this idea. What can I do to support it? I'm in one of these circles, or I'm in this red area, or whatever it is. So, thank you.
That's actually a really great tip on how to just improve the functionality of it, because there's documents outside of the map. But once you're in the map, you really want to be in the map, seeing and understanding and things like that. So maybe increasing either the links or resources within the interactive map itself, so that way you can get the information you want as you're in there navigating it.
That would be great if something like that was possible, because I can click on a red area, but it doesn't really tell me anything.
Yeah, you have to go back out to the other documents.
Yeah, so I don't know if like it's possible to put a link in the red areas that link you to something. But anyway, thank you.
That's a good idea.
Councilmember Asari?
My question is a very simple one. And it's always the question I have when people are coming to present to us is, is there any way, one, that we can support your work better, or anything that you would have us to do or be doing?
I really appreciate that question. And I think that the most that we can ask of you all is to hear us as we put forth concerns or recommendations on what we can do to improve the environmental quality of the city. So if we see opportunity with different memos for developments that we see, if we see different things that we would like to have more advocacy around as far as reaching out to the community, things like that, and bring them to the council, being heard is really one of the primary things that we can ask. So I appreciate it. And the Eco Heroes Celebration on April 20th, we invite you all to come. And please, again, submit your art, expressing your relationship and love for stormwater health. Thanks.
Thank you. Any final questions? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Albright. We appreciate it. And we are almost at the end of our 20-minute period, but I would like to have at least 10 minutes for the report from Clerk Bolden, if there are no objections. The report and questions. Clerk Bolden, please go ahead.
Thank you. I wrote a letter to the council members that I had not sent yet. And I'm going to read a few portions of it, which will help to frame some of what I'm reporting to you. Primarily, that I would like to see changes made in the way that the council operates, specifically around the issue of public comment. We've all alluded this evening to the comments that were made last week. So I know that's not really a surprise. And I know that over the course of the last week, some commentators have focused on where the comments came from, whether they were on Zoom or at the podium, whether the people speaking were residents of Bloomington or not. And I understand that it may be a comfort to think that the comments made under the veil of anonymity were not really people from or of our community. But the problem with that view is that it ignores the very real impact on those who are listening to the rhetorical violence directed at them. Current council processes allow council members to listen to comments but not directly engage. And while this allows members of the public to speak, it does not create a healthy dialogue. And we've seen that play out time and again. There are multiple times when the council could or should have spoken up, but the council remained silent. So, while members of the public had several minutes to speak at length about their belief in white supremacy, the council seemed frozen under the weight of its own processes. By the end of the evening, council members had less than one minute each to speak on their thoughts related to an issue that I know many of you felt passionately about. We can do better, and we should expect better. So I'm asking that we revisit our procedures related to public comment. And to that end, I spent some time over the last week reaching out to my fellow colleagues around the state about other options that are available to the council. It included time limits, the use of technology, and actually using your podium, or dais, I don't know which way you want to put it, to speak. Saying something can make a big difference. I recognize, as Councilmember P. Mont Smith said, that the Special Committee on Council Processes is one place where the council can begin to address the systemic issues that it currently faces. You could also have a work session. You could workshop ideas. You could schedule a series of listening sessions or constituent meetings, which it sounds like is going to happen. And I thank you as a resident and as clerk for doing so. But rather than chastising speakers who specifically direct comments toward council members, I would hope that we would direct that energy to speakers who specifically direct their hatred toward our community. Public service does not mean that we have to accept public abuse. The council does not have to remain silent, especially since I know you don't want that either. We can use all of the tools at our disposal to make comprehensive changes to our meeting procedures and policies to ensure a safe, equitable, and effective forum for the City of Bloomington. Now, to what I found out from my colleagues, I asked the question first in the Clerk's listserv, which includes not only Clerk's not only clerks from around the state, but also other officials who are related to it. I did receive a response back from Becca McQuig, who is the Chief Legal Counsel for AIM. AIM is the Accelerate Indiana Municipalities. It's one of the biggest organizations in the state related to cities and towns. Because a lot of what she sent to me was related to legal advice, I'm going to actually forward some of that to your council attorney because I do not want to presume or step into his space. But she did include some citations to court cases and ultimately said that as long as you have procedures related to public comment and follow them, that would be helpful. I reached out specifically by phone to my second-class city colleagues to ask specifically what they do. In a lot of them, what they do is they have slips or tickets, essentially, I don't know what else to call them right now, where people fill out their name, their address, their contact information, and the topic they would like to address in the meeting. And they hand those to the clerk. Then those are actually called out during the course of the meeting. That's what they do in several cities. Other options also include filling out a form online, which includes much of the same information, although it includes checkboxes for specifically saying which meeting you're planning on making this comment for. And for those online comments as well, if they're submitted by noon of the day of the meeting, they are included in the packet as part of the packet materials or the public record, as it may be. So I do have some examples of that that I can show you after the meeting or point you to the correct link. I try not to print out a lot of materials because, let's save a few sheets of paper, please. But that was what I found out so far. I have a few more calls that are pending because clerks are busy. But they're trying. And I am open and willing to try out any form of technology or to discuss at length whether there are options you have for receiving public comment that may be a little bit safer for all of us. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Clerk Bolden. Are there any questions for Clerk Bolden at this point? Councilmember Stossberg?
I just want to clarify that you're sending that out in written communication too, so that then we have those things to refer back to.
Yes. Now, just to clarify, do you mean the letter that I wrote to you, or do you also mean that, yes, yes?
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Zulik?
Based on the research that you've already done, is there one city strategy that you prefer over others?
I particularly like what Fishers, Indiana does. And I think, give me a second because this one I, so that was actually the city that I looked at. They have an online submission form. So, and it says, for those interested in providing public comment, please submit your comments below. See the calendar of public meetings. You may submit comments for multiple meetings on this form. All comments must be submitted by noon on the day of the meeting to make it into the record. And then it directs people to, for questions directed to City Hall in a gendousian minutes. It does move public comment into written form as opposed to spoken form. I still think it's an option that we should explore as a body or as a city. That is my opinion. I recognize you all will do what you want to do. But at least having a written form means that we're assured that we're going to get the names spelled correctly, and we're actually going to have something to refer to, and people can share that information as they need. That's my personal preference. I like that a lot. I also like that Noblesville does a good job of listing out council rules, not only for speakers but for audience members as well. And it includes council contact information at the bottom of that form. So you can see who all of your representatives are and who your elected officials are, including the mayor, the clerk, and the council members with their phone numbers. So I will have all those materials for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this topic? Thank you so much, Clerk Bolden, for that extra work. I know you're very busy anyway. And I really appreciate you looking into best practices in other communities. And I do think, just given the workload that the Special Committee on Council Processes already have, we might discuss this with all nine of us in a work session coming up and welcome public comment at that work session on public comment, or some kind of input for public. Thank you so much. All right, we will now go to, I think we're, council committees. We have a report from the sidewalk committee. And Councilmember Rosenbarger is the chair, so I will turn it over to her.
Great. Thank you so much. So the sidewalk committee met a few weeks ago. We had allocated a portion of our $350,000 Alternative Transportation Fund budget in a previous meeting, but we had questions about the remaining funds. So we met on March 21st to go through the, what would hopefully be recommendation to allocate the final $230,000. And in that meeting, we looked at a few different options. We had planning and transportation and engineering staff create a list for us of the priority projects listed in order of the rubric that we use to allocate funds to projects. So we had that. And then we had highlighted from staff what projects they recommended. So most of our meeting was about looking at Overhill Drive, which is on the east side of Bloomington, connecting East Third up to, I think, East Seventh or East Tenth. And that is a street that I think was number 18 on the priority list for us. And it would cost about $230,000 to put a sidewalk in two blocks. That would go from East Third up to East Fifth Street. We had asked in our February meeting for some speed data on that street to see how many cars were using it in a day and what their speeds were. And it's kind of neat that on that street, on Third Street, a buffer had been put in on Third, so cars can no longer turn left onto, can no longer turn left going north onto Overhill Drive, so cars can only turn right. And it looks like that's been really effective in like limiting traffic and limiting speeds on that street. So I think the average speed was, it was just a little over the speed limit. And then there were about 220 cars a day. So what we asked as a sidewalk committee was whether or not that street really warranted a sidewalk that costs a lot of money, or if it made more sense to potentially look at any kind of speed cushions or anything to share the road more like safely over time with pedestrians and people on bikes. So what we did instead then was look at some projects that we have underway. And I don't know, if anyone wants to see the map, let me know. We can pull it up. But a project that is really in need of a sidewalk is at 17th and Dunn. So it's the southwest corner of our stadium, the Vaillou Stadium. And there's a little connection there that is missing on the east side of the road. So on the stadium side of the road going north, there is no sidewalk there. And I think in the past couple years, there have been four crashes in that space. And so in 2024, we council already allocated money for the design of that sidewalk. And then we are going to be recommending that we allocate the rest of the budget to the $230,000 to actually build out that sidewalk, just as soon as staff can get that ready, which I mean, is probably not happening in 2024. But it will be rather expensive to do it, probably around the $230,000. And so we thought that was a good use of these funds. So happy to answer questions or general discussion on this.
Yes, I think Councilmember Stossberg, who was also on the committee, would like to say something.
Yeah, I think technically of that $230,000, 200 of it went to the Dunn Street construction that just got referenced. And 30,000 of it went more generally to the Green Acres neighborhood, which is where that Overhill sidewalk would be, kind of at the discretion of staff in terms of other traffic calming that might either, when they look at the Overhill Drive again, might be warranted there, or might be better used in other places in that neighborhood because there were a couple other things that they were looking at there, including a new resident-led project. And then also the other sidewalk, actually, that's in the design phase right now that we approved money for is on Jefferson Street, which is also Green Acres neighborhood. Yeah.
Great. Yep, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a question for Council Attorney Lucas. Is this report, I don't see it in the packet, or at least, is it in the packet? I didn't see it.
Of the draft.
In the table of content, in the bookmarks, which is what I always refer to.
I apologize if that bookmark was missing. It was in the packet. The bookmark was added just today. I noticed that the bookmark was missing as well. So apologies.
Okay, thank you. So it is available to the public. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. That was really interesting. I just want to kind of confirm my understanding. We've had, you know, a lot of conversations about greenways over the last couple of years and traffic calming and what its role is in the overall transportation ecosystem. And I think I've heard comments from some, from at least a few residents that I think sort of don't consider traffic calming to be about pedestrians at all. Like, that doesn't reflect my own experience with things like the West Allen Street, or I don't know if it's West Allen, but Allen Street and Bryant Park that has a greenway has radically changed in terms of its pedestrian use over time with those measures. And so I think of it more as about like selecting the right tool for the application. So traffic calming, things that slow down speeds and make it more comfortable to walk in areas where it might be 10 times more expensive to put a sidewalk as traffic calming and that are already relatively low-volume streets, might be the appropriate tool there. Whereas somewhere like 17th and Dunn, which is high-traffic, high-crash rate, necessitates that separated infrastructure in a more significant way. And so I guess just requesting maybe for the committee chairs, a little more information even about, A, is that like a correct understanding of the committee's approach and engagement with staff about using data and evidence about tool selection to address needs in different contexts? And then B, is this kind of a new approach? Like, has the committee engaged in that type of conversation before? Or I guess to my recollection, it's only been about sidewalk only kind of in the past. Thank you.
Okay, A and B. And you're welcome. A is, the question is, is the sidewalk committee basically engaging in looking at appropriate tools for each street that needs some kind of sidewalk or connector or safety enhancement? So the answer to that is, yes, we are, we did basically at this meeting start, well, first, we started allocating funds a few years ago, right, to, in general, the $50,000 for the resident-led traffic calming and greenways program. So that was sort of the first side path, I guess, down, just building sidewalk connectors where we are missing sidewalks in the city. And that program has been wildly successful, I would say. So we, at these meetings, did start having discussions about sidewalks being basically the most expensive thing we could be building for pedestrians on a street, and that some streets could instead benefit from forms of greenways or traffic calming or other types of buffers, I guess. And so, and because this is the Alternative Transportation Fund budget that we have, our code does not dictate that it be spent exclusively on sidewalks. And so Overhill specifically got us talking about, look, maybe a sidewalk on that street isn't the best approach, and maybe we could get a bigger bang for our buck by doing something different there and a sidewalk somewhere else. We are going to meet again sometime this year, the sidewalk committee, to talk about what, you know, it has been focused on sidewalks for a very long time, but like, what do we want to do? And do we want it to look more at just alternative transportation as it is, just in the code, right? The purpose of the committee is, I think, to increase safety for alternative modes of transportation in our city. So like, we actually have like a wide array of tools and options that we could spend this money on. And we're just going to kind of go back with staff and look at that and see what direction we want to go, if any. B is what?
I think you actually answered B as well. It was sort of a little bit about the history of that evolution, shift towards different tools in the name of safety as opposed to one tool only. Thank you. You answered it.
And I will add that, you know, because the greenway, traffic calming, greenway allocation has been really successful, you know, planning and transportation developed a rubric that neighborhoods get to use, right, for scoring and transparency and like dollar allocations. We also talked about, and then did in this recommendation, budget more in general funds that the expertise of staff can then dictate how to use, right? So those 30,000 are like, hey, we don't know what Green Acres needs, but if you all meet with those residents and choose things, here's $30,000 for any project over there.
Thank you. Are there other questions about the sidewalk committee report? All right, seeing none, we will go to the public. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on the sidewalk committee report? You can come to the podium and state your name and sign in for the record. And you'll have up to three minutes.
Thanks. My name's Greg Alexander. I finally made it to a sidewalk committee meeting. I gave my speech. They weren't impressed. You've heard it. They've heard it. I have a lot of respect for the specific members of that committee and for the work that they're doing. But I watched the committee create an ad hoc traffic calming system just for one neighborhood instead of providing sidewalk to that neighborhood. And like, the planning staff is extremely responsive. There's a planning staff member in the room there agreeing to implement like a neighborhood outreach. You know, you can design the plan immediately with this planning staff member. But they're basically spending no money. So this is an enormous council oversight burden for this project, but it's to very little benefit to the public. And staff, the real story, of course, is funding, you know? Staff looked at 17 of those 20 places, on the top 20 sidewalks that they identified by the heuristic determined by the Bike and Ped Safety Commission. And they said, they use the word feasibility concerns, feasibility concerns. And because of that word, they ruled out 17 of them. You know, 17 of the 20th highest priority sidewalk locations that they've identified, they've said, 17 of them, we just can't build that $200,000 at a time. And so they came up with this one that's really fairly low on the list. And if we actually had some faith that the list was going to be visited, I think staff would put a lot more time to putting a lot more sidewalk segments. Because there's a lot of missing sidewalk segments they aren't looking at, that they're not applying the heuristic to. But they just know, you know, they're not going to build most of the sidewalk gaps they know about. They're going to know about high-important sidewalk gaps where people have been killed walking in the street because the sidewalk was so crappy. And they're just not going to do anything about it. And they know that they're not going to do anything about it because you're giving them $200,000 a year. You know, okay, so was it, what, 330 now? It's nothing. We have an enormous liability that we all recognize. And we're simply not funding it. And it's immoral. It's stressful to staff. And frankly, if you guys are going to spend an hour and a half in a committee meeting with staff nitpicking their tiny $30,000 jobs, you should be spending time with engineers and with public works. You shouldn't be spending time with planning staff that already is overseeing a tremendous project with no money and no resources. Ask staff to succeed. You have a right to demand that they succeed, but you have to give them the resources. You have to give them the support. You have to give them the mandate. Thank you for your time. But don't, I have no gratitude for this failure.
Additional public comment on the sidewalk committee report? And Mr. Lucas, could you please make the announcement for anybody on Zoom?
Yes, if there are folks on Zoom that would like to speak to this report, please raise your hand or send a chat to the meeting host.
Would anybody else in council chambers like to speak to the sidewalk committee report? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Not that I see.
All right. Well, we'll come back to council. Are there any final comments on this before a vote?
I have a question.
Oh, Councilmember Rallo, you have a question?
Yes, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Alexander's comments about eliminating 17 of the 20, of the 20 projects because of feasibility. Councilmember Rosenberg, do you want to respond to that? And what is the remedy? Because these seem like they're worthy projects.
Yep, so the remedy, I think, is something Mr. Alexander also pointed to would be a wild increase in funding for things like sidewalks in our city. It's just when, so the top 20 projects that staff brought, Overhill Drive was number 18. So their rationale also was like, we're going to be doing this within four years, four or five years, whether we pick it this time or not. So they were sort of seeing the top 20 as getting done in five years. And so for them, it didn't matter much at what, in what year we took that up. But like I said before, what we talked a lot about was different tools on South Overhill Drive because speed seemed to be pretty safe and there are no recorded crashes. So, I mean, a problem with some of the missing links in our city is that they are long and they are very expensive. So it is, I would say, irrational that a measly budget of $350,000 would be used to like piecemeal a sidewalk together over five years, and it would cost way more than if it just got done all at once, which is what we should be doing. So I think that, does that answer your question?
Well, could I follow up? I think there are two questions I have. One is, the Sidewalk Committee has in the past leveraged money through the MPO by contributing money from the commission, from the committee. Was that pursued at all? So that's one question. The second one is about, Mr. Alexander says that there are plenty of missing linkages. Were those evaluated in terms of, you know, you could put $200,000 to good use in a missing linkage?
I mean, that's where the missing links can be very long and expensive. So that would be like, it would be like a puzzle piece every year, basically, if we were to do some of those projects on the list. Like, that is where other funding, unless we greatly increase this budget, other funding should be used for those projects. Because we, we don't, we don't have that, we can't afford a mile of sidewalk in this council budget. It's just, it's crazy expensive. This time, usually staff will bring up if MPO dollars are being used or CDBG funding is being used. Also, that's a very small budget, too, for physical improvements. And I don't, any council member on the committee can weigh in. I don't think that they have any of that slated, though, definitely for 2024 on this list, as far as I know.
So would you recommend increasing the budget?
Oh, yeah, I would recommend increasing our Alternative Transportation Fund by millions of dollars.
All right, any other final comments before we vote? All right, let's get a motion on the table.
Great. I move to approve the Council Sidewalk Committee Report, Part II, and the funding recommendations regarding remaining 2024 council sidewalk funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And are there any final comments?
I have one final comment.
Yes, Councilmember Rosenberg.
Also, just in relation to what Mr. Alexander said, these meetings do have a lot of staff in them, so it is a lot of staff's time that we're using on this very tiny budget, right? I mean, we don't have anyone from public works, I was just looking at our list, but two planning staff, two engineers, utilities, parks and rec, office of the clerk, and office of the council. So it is a lot of people weighing in and like doing this work behind the scenes for what does seem to be a very small budget. That's it.
All right, seeing no other comments. All those in favor of approving the Sidewalk Committee recommendations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those are adopted. Thank you very much, Councilmember Rosenberg. We will now move on to reports from the public. So this is public comment on items that are not on the city council agenda. We, I am going to review the guidelines for public comment that are also available at the clerk's desk. So we do value voices of members of our community. We have two opportunities for public comment. And I'd like to just highlight a few of our guidelines. The city council encourages civility in public discourse and requests that speakers refrain from language, which would incite an immediate breach of the peace, refrain from undue repetition, extended discussion of irrelevancies, obscenity, and personal attacks against private individuals unrelated to the operation of the city. These rules are intended to foster a fair, respectful, and productive meeting. Any person who violates these rules will be declared out of order by the chair. A person who persists in violating these rules may be removed from the meeting. On March 27th, a member of the public made accusations against another member of the public, Chris Sturbaum. So I'll just say Greg Alexander made accusations against Chris Sturbaum during the public comment period, which seems to rise to the level of personal attacks against private individuals unrelated to the operation of the city because Mr. Sturbaum is not serving on the HPC or any other body of the city currently. So I do want to apologize that I did not declare Mr. Alexander out of order on March 27th, when he made that statement. I do want to emphasize that members of the public do have a right to criticize city government and any other layer of government, but personal attacks on private individuals will not be tolerated here. So with that in mind, Mr. Lucas, will you please make the announcement if there's anybody on Zoom who wants to comment?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can do that by clicking on the raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. I see one hand raised at the moment.
One hand on Zoom, and then here in council chambers, how many would like to speak? One, two, three, I assume four? All right, so five. So let's do a maximo of four minutes each, because we have 20 minutes for the whole period. So please approach the podium, and I think there's a sign-up sheet and also state your name for the record.
My name's Mark Hagerty. I'm alarmed, as anybody is, about the Nazis using hate speech in public over your television But at the same time, I'm much more worried about the Second Amendment in regards to this chamber. I think you can weather the first one, but the Second Amendment, you don't have a cure for. Not even a conversation for. Our hands are tied. Okay, the Environmental Commission. Lake Monroe stinks. It's a sewer on the bottom. It's two feet deep in plastic trash in the main body. Should we have motorboats in our drinking water? We should consider it. I went to vote last election, and my vote wasn't counted. I tried to vote for Joe Davis, but they wouldn't let me. They made a good effort towards it and everything. You can see, I didn't have any opposition for any candidate, and I didn't have the ability to vote no for any candidate. And I couldn't vote for Joe Davis, who ran and tried to get enough signatures here and was disqualified by a judge. This is part of the loss of our democracy, and it's been happening for a long time. This group here should spend about an hour with me in a room, and we'll talk about the elections and what's gone wrong. You wonder why these citizens attack our Capitol? It's because they sense the loss of our democracy. There's no other, they got rid of all the independent candidates and all the independent parties, and you can't even have a write-in vote. How can you even call that free and fair or anything like that, like the Constitution says? You can't. People are, as they, this media circus goes on and people's attention is out there about these, all these things that are happening, our legislature takes these things away one by one. There was a time when there were six or seven parties on the ballot, and you could have different ideas. Now there's only two heavy corporate capitalist parties dominating the whole rap. And I'm not just talking about away from locally. I'm talking about here, where the biggest corporation in town is IU Health, or, you know, Indiana University is just a subsidiary of IU Health. We don't even have a, we've lost our hospital. We don't have a place for our homes. This place is a walking disaster. And we aren't talking about it, there's no way to get to public officials, there's no open government. The judges have secret meetings that they decide about public matters in. Nobody says anything. Multiple deaths in custody at the jail, and nobody knows about it? Public officials don't know about it, it's not discussed? Where the hell am I living? Bob Dylan's famous because he opened up for Martin Luther King at the "I Have a Dream" speech after writing a documentary song about the death of Medgar Evers. That's why Bob Dylan's famous. There's all these things nobody knows. It's about time we learned.
Hi, my name's Josh Montag. Before I start, I just want to say that Clerk Bolden's absolutely right. Public comment should be an open conversation. It would let councilors be able to make statements, but it could also be used to ask councilors questions. Having a fluid conversation is a better way to understand constituents. So I hopefully look forward to see progress on that. Now to my main point. I was going to come up here and make a, I wrote a whole speech about the terrible comments made last week, but I think I should focus my time rather on something positive, and that's the way the city conducted the Solory Eclipse. I thought while we didn't get as many people as we were expecting for the event, it still was done fantastically. I don't think it's that easy to coordinate between the county and the university and have that all go out without a problem. Everyone, to my knowledge, had glasses and accessibility to get them. That's because the city did its job. I just love when government isn't just about politics, but it's about helping the community. There were fun events that were put on, on the university campus, and to cap it all off, I think the eclipse was probably the most beautiful sight I've ever seen. The planning and execution was done excellently, and I just wanted to thank you, the mayor's office, county, and university for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Zach Muller. I've been thinking about what happened last week at the meeting. I wasn't here, and I got a notification on my phone at like 2:00 in the morning when I saw that Mayor Thompson had gone in pretty much contemporaneously after the meeting, recorded her thoughts, and she said something that was really important to me. Let's see here. I'm going to apologize because, like she said, you know, I'm not perfectly precise in remembering, but I think that we have an obligation, when we see something that's wrong, to speak up in the moment, even if our voices aren't, if we're not saying it perfectly. And I realize that many of those here are elected, and there's a certain expectation that your words might be weaponized by members of the public against you later, and I can certainly, you know, empathize with the shock that must come from that. I can only imagine what the shock must have been for some of those people who were directly attacked with the real language that was used by some of those members of the public that chose to make those statements from the convenience of the internet. And I'm disappointed, genuinely, you know? I don't think that anyone here was forced to run for office. I think everybody here entered into that willingly. You know, I've been thinking about, you know, important people from history who maybe have things to say about when bad stuff is happening and how we choose to either speak up or opt against. And there's a quote that I did check, it's not misattributed, it's, John Stuart Mill said that "Bad men need nothing more to compass their ends than that good men should look on and do nothing." I think we can forgive the gendered language used in 1867. We were not as, you know, progressive then as we are now, but I think that the sentiment is absolutely, it holds true. And, you know, I just, I think it's really kind of preposterous that some of the most thoughtful commentary that we've heard tonight from elected officials are from the elected officials who were most directly attacked. And so I want to say directly that I appreciate the thought that Clerk Bolden put into her comments earlier, and I appreciate the thought that Councilman Asari put into his thoughts earlier. And I've read Councilperson Zulik's press release, and I'm grateful for her taking the time to construct that after being directly attacked in that meeting. And I expect you to do better. Shock is great. I'm sorry that you were shocked. I was shocked when I saw it. Had I been here, I would have gotten in line, and maybe I would have gotten to speak and maybe not. You were here, and I don't want to pretend that I know what everybody's mind was in that moment. It was not great. It was a charged evening, and I'm sure of that. I could sense that watching it on replay on my computer. I expect better as a member of the electorate. I don't like getting up and talking in front of people, but I'm doing it now. I expect you, with a microphone and the experience and the time that you've got, to do the right thing, even if it makes you feel yucky, even if you're shocked and you don't say it perfectly. Say something, please. And with that said, I know it's hard, and so I don't want anybody to take this away as, oh, gosh, the public doesn't appreciate us. You're doing a hard job. But I want you to do the hard job and stand up for people when they're being bullied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. I just wanted to let you know, I'm not going to repeat the accusations I made two weeks ago, but I do want to highlight that I was making an accusation of official misconduct by a member of a city body that was appointed by some members who are still on this committee, this council right in front of me. And so if you were to silence that accusation, which reflects not only against the individual I named, but also against several members of this council, I think that would be extremely inappropriate, and I'd probably be consulting a lawyer if you had declared me out of order at that time, and I think I'd probably be winning. So I'm just saying, you guys really, that is an accusation of official misconduct, and if you're going to censor that, what's the point, you know? Anyways, that's not what I came to talk about, and this is respectful. I want to echo something that I, I wish I could have gone back, but I didn't have time to listen to what she said, but, so I'm going on memory, but a member of the public, Jamie Shoal, last week said, I hope it doesn't surprise you, I agree so strongly, but she said that it's ridiculous how much work we're putting into the greenways program, and yet we're not doing anything substantial for the intersection of Hillside and the Hawthorne-Wetherstone Greenway, which is at Weatherstone and Olive, kind of at the south end of, I guess, Elm Heights neighborhood. And, you know, there is going to be an improvement at that intersection. It's going to be timid, it's going to be inexpensive relatively, you know, it's going to be ineffective for the most part. It will be an improvement, though. I don't want to like I don't want to, like, mislead. A flashing light is better than nothing, but it's, it's not very good. It's not very effective. People don't yield, the science has been done, people don't yield if traffic's going over 35. People do yield if it's going less than 30. Like, we need to slow traffic on Hillside. The engineers know this, the planners know this. What we don't know is whether or not you guys will provide enough money for a project of that scale, because working on a street like Hillside is expensive. It's, the problem that we've built with cars is an expensive problem just to cope with. And your, the resources that we put into making the problem worse are enormous, but when it comes to installing like a decent crosswalk of a busy street, our engineers feel like their hands are tied, because if they actually did something effective, people would complain about that, and would you guys have their backs? Like, after you've seen how this council has treated engineering staff in the last two years, do you think they would feel like you have their backs if they were to actually effectively calm traffic on a major street like Hillside? But the project can't work if we don't. And on the theme of missing connections in greenways, there's a Thornton-Ardan Greenway, and it's, you know, I've heard it criticized. It's, it's just a line on a map. When you're trying to get from one place to another, you want a line on the map. The line goes all the way from the B-line to Arden Place, which, I don't know, it, it goes east across most of the, the south side of the city. And it starts at the Black Lumber B-Link Trail. But that trail ends where Thornton ends. If you're going east, there, there's a block, or about a half a block missing. I don't, I don't know if I'm characterizing that well, but it's, the city already owns the land, and now we're working on the other side of it. So there's a, an eastern section and a western section, and they're going to be disconnected. Well, if they're disconnected, they're not a useful transportation facility. And eventually, they will be connected, I hope. But the fact of the matter is, staff doesn't have the ambition to imagine that it's even remotely possible that we'll complete that connection next year or the year after even, probably. I'd love to hear differently. I haven't heard from staff about this. Maybe they have like some, some update for me that I'm just out of the loop on. But people are looking at that, and they're saying, what's the point in having a little half-mile disconnected greenway on the east end of this? That's where they stop the question. But they don't even know. If we built this connection, that would be so useful. It would go all the way to the B-line. But without the connection, they don't understand it. We got to be like real forward that we get, are going to fund these connections, and soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have somebody on Zoom, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, we have Kyle Davis.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Hello, I'm here to discuss housing, specifically to propose legislation to create a planned unit development plan with Sedbury developers near South Wyomar Road. This discussion has to be predicated on one central fact: more houses mean lower prices. This understanding has been, yeah?
Agenda tonight for first reading? So I just want to clarify with our attorney if this is an appropriate time to make your comments about that PUD. Mr. Lucas, it's, it's on the agenda just for first reading and no discussion. Is it appropriate for the public to comment?
It depends on if the comment is, is on that item of legislation. I, I would point out to Mr. Davis that that item would, will likely be taken up next week for second reading. There will be an opportunity for public comment at that time on, on the ordinance. Our, our local code does say that items on the agenda for first reading are not to be debated or amended, so depending on, on the rest of your comments, it might be better suited for next week.
I could amend my comments to not include that piece of legislation if that is all right with everyone.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
So essentially, I'm here to discuss one central fact, which is that more houses mean lower prices. This understanding has been shown repeatedly in paper after paper, and the case study reveal, the case study results are evident with uptown towns and cities like Austin and Minneapolis having far lower housing prices than cities and towns that do not embrace these changes. Now, I'm a member and a leader of a new organization called YMBIANA, a regional chapter of a national network called YMB Action, which seeks to promote housing production and sustainability to retain and expand economic vitality within our communities. Now, I'm certainly biased on this question, and I'm not trying to nudge towards here, but I believe the evidence is on our side. We must change with the times to build housing and help increase economic vitality, along with helping to increase density in our communities, so that we can both accommodate individuals who want to come to our, to come to Bloomington, as well as increase the economic opportunity for those who decide to come. Increasing density also helps to increase availability of public transit, which is a necessary step on the road to increasing sustainability and environmental vitality within our community. Otherwise, if we do not go through this, through this pathway, we risk economic atrophy and a more car-dependent system, a future that I believe nobody truly wishes for this place. That's, that's the end of my comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Is there anybody else on Zoom, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next on Zoom, we have Jamie.
Okay, go ahead. Please state your full name, and you'll have up to four minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jamie Shoal, and I heard Commissioner Greg Alexander mention Thornton-Ardan. I'm sorry I didn't catch all of that. What he did say about some of these areas with Hillside and the speediness is absolutely true. I live near here on, on Thornton, near Olive. And also what he mentioned about Thornton going all the way through, there used to be limestone cutting, some kind of limestone manufacturing there, and it's no longer there. And to have that throughway would be ve, very beneficial to get to the B-line. Now, that may or may not have any impact on my thoughts and perceptions on any kind of speed, lowering of speed, speed humps, whatever, on Thornton-Ardan, just because we don't have, especially where I am, I don't have the traffic, let alone speedy traffic. I just don't have the traffic here. And I've sat there for years whenever I was working online and saw my neighbors walking by. And, you know, I, I know the traffic that's there. What I would like to mention, though, and perhaps Commissioner Alexander would be interested in this, is that I know I was talking to one of my neighbors recently, and she did not know about the Thornton-Ardan change. She thought it was also unnecessary and a waste of money. But where that money could be spent is on East Miller Drive, besides on Hillside. On East Miller Drive, we do have people blowing through stop signs. I know there are some changes that will be taking place, that will go from East Miller, I believe, to Huntington. And that was because of the city buses running that route. Although there has been a girl from, in high school a few years ago, who was hurt and seriously injured by speeding cars that blow through the stop sign at Miller and Olive Street. And some of them may just passingly glance as they cross Highland, which is a very busy street, and the BEDC and Montessori School is just down the way, as well as the Y. A lot of people walk in this area. So I would like to ask for whoever may be there and listening to reevaluate that area and perhaps maybe take some of this monies and put on East Miller Drive to make that much safer for pedestrians. Thank you for your time, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who'd like to make a public comment? Okay. We will come back to the next part of our agenda, which is appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any recommendations from our interview committees? I don't think so tonight. All right, we will go to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
I move that Resolution 2024-09 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of introducing Resolution 2024-09, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2024-09, a resolution expressing support for the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation application for fiscal year 2024, Section 5339B, funds for design and construction of a lead-certified, climate-resilient administrative operations and maintenance complex. The synopsis is as follows. Sorry. This resolution expresses the Bloomington Common Council's support for the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation's application for Section 5339 grant funding, funding through the Federal Transit Administration.
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 2024-09 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And do we have Director of Bloomington Transportation Corporation on Zoom tonight, or who do we have to present?
Good evening. John Connell, General Manager, Bloomington Public Transportation. I'm joined by Zach Hunic from Bloomington Transit. Zach is our grants and procurement manager. Mr. Hunic is putting the final touches on our grants submission. One of the things that, that really strengthens our chances is to demonstrate a united local support for this project, and that's exactly what this resolution, resolution does, and that's why we feel it's very important to include it in our submission.
Thank you. Mr. Hunic?
Yeah, Zach Hunic with Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. Yeah, it's a pretty exciting time for tran, can you hear me? There we go. It is a pretty exciting time for transit. I've been saying that for the five years that I've been there, but it's really, finally we're on the cusp of really expanding transit in a way that's really unprecedented here locally. Big part of that's the commitment of ED-Lit funds to BPTC over the next few years. That's already allowed us to do some pretty, pretty cool projects. We're deploying additional Sunday service. We're looking at a high-frequency transit corridor along Third Street, you know, going east-west. We've leveraged local funds for eight additional battery-electric buses, so we're on the way to transitioning to a zero-emission fleet. That all being said, you know, we've got all these big projects going on. The biggest bottleneck for us right now is a facility. We are just at maximum capacity at Grimes Lane there. The ability to expand on the parcels adjacent there is limited for a number of reasons, so we are putting together a package to build a entirely new, state-of-the-art transit facility. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Great. Could you describe the grant and how much it would be for, and how much would be the local match?
Yeah, it's the 5339B Bus and Bus Facilities Grant through FTA. We are applying for $35 million in FTA funds, and it's $8,750,000 in local funds, and that's a mix of, you know, ED-Lit, state PMTF, and accrued federal grant dollars in there.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Hunic or Mr. Connell? Councilmember Rallo?
Could you describe the, the timeline for the application to when you might, might find out success?
Deadline, the deadline for submission is April 25th, so the end of the month here. Like I said, putting on, final touches on it right now. Usually here back in the fall, maybe late summer to the fall, when you get the award.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Sosberg?
Is there already a site chosen for this, or are you still looking for a certain site?
We are in the process of narrowing down sites right now.
Okay, I don't see any, so thank you very much. We will go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on Resolution 2024-09? If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function or use a chat message to the meeting host if you'd like to comment. I don't see anybody in chambers. Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody on Zoom?
No, not that I see.
All right, we'll come back to council. Are there any comments on Resolution 2024-09? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I appreciate the proactiveness with which Bloomington Transit is pursuing this project. I think it's been a known need for a while, but also heard from Director Connell recently in the specific nature of battery-electric vehicles, sort of accelerates maybe the need, need for this in particular. And just appreciate as well, Mr. Hunic, calling out the, the really significant impact of this council's decision last term to dedicate a significant amount of local funding directly to Bloomington Transit. It's really allowed them to leverage and take advantage of state and federal programs in a way that, actually maybe primarily federal programs, in a way that I think not many transit agencies have been able to do. I just wanted to highlight that that's a big deal, so positive news. That's it. Happy to support the resolution. Thank you.
Other comments from council members? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I'm glad that my colleague mentioned that. I think it was a very wise thing that the council and the former mayor did, was to commit to Bloomington Transit. I'm obviously all in favor of this. I think it's a very wise thing to invest in an alternative to liquid fuels for climate and for other reasons, vulnerability to, to oil supplies and so forth, and fluctuating costs. The one plea that I would have is that I think that we should really think about free bus ridership in the future for all Bloomington, for anyone for that matter. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Seeing none, I think we can move to a vote on Resolution 2024-09. Clerk Bolden?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Sosberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
And Daly?
Yes.
Thank you.
That resolution passes with a vote of eight to zero. Thank you, and good luck on the grant.
I move that Resolution 2024-10 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of introducing Resolution 2024-10, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Yes, Resolution 2024-10, to approve of a 2024 budget for the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board of Managers. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution approves of a 2024 budget for the Capital Improvement Board to be funded through the use of previously appropriated city food and beverage tax funds. I move that Resolution 2024-10 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And who do we have here to present? Mr. Jeff Underwood for, on behalf of the CIB?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Underwood. I am the Controller and Assistant Treasurer for the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board, seeking your approval of our budget. We appeared before you a few weeks ago, requesting $250,000. You approved a resolution to go to the Food and Beverage Tax Council, and they reviewed that and gave their approval there as well, so we're back tonight seeking formal approval of that budget. Again, breaking it down into, category one is zero, category two for supplies is $1,000, category three for services is $249,000, and category four is zero. And the majority of that money is to go for professional services for both internal and external, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council members? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much, Mr. Underwood. The, the first question is about category three, the breakdown. What is meant by professional fees internal?
That would be mainly staff. We don't, we, category one for per- We don't, we, category one for personal services is zero. They've elected to hire external help contractually, so that would be for myself and for our attorneys, Bungar and Robertson, Jim Whitlatch.
Okay, and, and, and so, and then the other fees and things here, how did we come to, to those, how did we come to those estimates?
Exactly. They're estimates of what we think we may need. As we've said before, and I want to reiterate again, this, this request matched what was appropriated by the city council last year in their budget of $250,000. We'll be working over the next few weeks to determine whether we'll need additional funding for the rest of this year, as well as start working on our 2025 budget. We, we would work in concert with the administration, and if they need any additional funds, then we would come and request those together in additional appropriation of food and beverage. So, these are, these are purely estimates. We know that we're beginning to contract with, design, update on the design. We believe we'll be able to pay that through existing city funds that it was already appropriated and, and has POs for, but it'd be things for like owner's rep, and then we're also looking at using a process called a CMC at Risk, which would be the actual contractor for the convention center, and they would be involved in the, in the pre-design services as well, so.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
And I, I recognize that we're, you know, adopting a sort of method that some might describe as, you know, progressive, we might say, sort of progressive, what do you call it, elaboration, that as the project develops, you want to give more details on the project and come and ask us for more things. I'm a little bit concerned, as I always state here in council, about inertia and how difficult it is to change processes once they get going, and, and our inability to build into this process, like the need for, I think, progressive elaboration of, of plans as they proceed. And so, how, when we're talking about pre-designed processes, I mean, the pre, the early design phase and things like that, how do you engage with a, with a design firm when we haven't even made decisions about, for example, whether we're going to go to the east or the south, or how large this property is going to be, what we're going to do with the Bungar property? Like, like, how do you, how do you, like, what are we designing when we don't have answers to those questions? Thank you.
Good evening. John Wykart, I'm the President of the Capital Improvement Board, and I wished I'd borne my hearing aids tonight so that I could hear all of your questions.
I can speak much louder.
Was your question, how do we proceed with design or pre-design before we've had site selection? Was that your question?
Yeah, when, when there's, when there's so many unanswered questions, I mean, I think, I think it was, when was the, when was the CIB's last meeting? Was it this, this, today? Oh, okay. Have there been conversations, for example, about what, what the plans are with the, with the Bungar and Robertson property that the, that the city owns, for example? Yeah, like, it seems to me that, yeah, I mean, maybe I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, and a good question, and I would point out that there are actually four different ownerships of properties around the convention center. So, the Redevelopment Commission owns the Bungar Robertson property. They also own some properties, I believe, south of the current location. The county owns properties. The Building Corporation over the convention center owns properties. The city has some properties, and one of our goals, in fact, from our meeting today, since we are charged with requesting transfer of any properties required for the project, at our meeting today, we determined that we need to reach out to all of the owners of all the, the properties involved, to ask them what their intention is about their, those properties. Are those properties available for expansion? Are those properties being donated for that purpose? Or is there some expectation that there may be compensation for those properties being used? So, as we, and, and the design process that we're involved in, we continue to use Schmidt Associates, the architects of record, from the project when we last left off in 2019. The inter-local agreement, of which you're obviously a party to, asked us, or directed us, not to, in a sense, reinvent a wheel, and to pick up where we left off in terms of things that had been vetted in that period of time. We continue to retain Schmidt, who's been involved in that design process. They are working now on a project they've described as rescoping, and they will come to us at our May meeting and show us what has happened in that design process over the last five years. So, in particular, what costs have changed, what, where they last left off with design. What's important for us to know is what sites are available for us to move to, because we don't want to continue to have architectural expenses involved in making assumptions about what direction we're going to go. When we left the project in 2019, the preferred location was the Bungar Robertson property. Since that time, assumptions have changed. So, assumptions have changed about whether that property will be donated, whether there's going to be compensation sought for that property. So, we need to revisit that assumption, and we also should not make an assumption that we will go to the Bungar Robertson property. In 2017, I've been on all three of these committees since 2017 on the convention center. In 2017, the original plan was to go south, so we've asked Schmidt Associates to look at, as they re-scope the project, what are the options going north? What are the options going south? What are the options going east? Because the county has purchased additional land to the east since we last left off with the project. So, and I, and I would, I would mention, all of our meetings are public meetings. They're publicly advertised. We've now included you to make sure all of you are aware of those public meetings. All of our committee meetings are public, and we want to be as transparent in this process as, as we can be. We, we, we not only are required to do that, we want to do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I, I do have a follow-up question, but I, I see that others have questions, so maybe come back. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I appreciate the, those meeting notices, and I'm not generally able to attend, but I do take a look at the agendas and keep up in that way, at least marginally, and so I appreciate that. When we were here a few weeks ago, and in our recent work session, too, I, I expressed, I think, similar feelings to Councilmember Asari, that the further we move down this process, the, the more certain assumptions or path dependencies sort of get built in, in ways that are really hard to revisit, and I'm, you know, I have a number of issues that I'm concerned about. I even mentioned some at the last meeting, we spoke about this. And so, I'm just, like, I have probably seven or eight questions, all kind of related to understanding the full context of the decisions we're making, and at what point certain things can be visited or revisited. And so, some of these are kind of in that vein, and like, just to understand scale and scope, like, do we have a rough idea of what, like, the overall bonding capacity would be, for instance? This tax, I think we know, will sunset no later than 2045. Like, could somebody share that information, like, roughly the, the, you know, the bonding capacity for the city's portion of the?
Well, it's been, we have estimates. I don't know if Corporation Counsel Rice wants to help me with this, but certainly, going out to the bond market, we're going to have to figure that out.
Maybe they could ballpark like five to $10 million range or something.
Yeah, we have been told it's about--
Please state your name for the record. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I always forget. Margie Rice, Corporation Counsel. We've been told by Buzz Krone, who's probably going to be the financial advisor for this project, anywhere between 50 to 60 million dollars total. That would be max, obviously. He, us, we have about 17 million dollars in funding right now, getting about 4 million dollars a year if things stay about the same.
Thank you.
And that's about a 20, 20-year bond.
Thank you. I have more questions, but I can hold if there are others.
Are there any other first-round questions? We'll go back to Councilmember Asari.
This is a question for, for both, and, and please, don't, don't, don't take this as an aggressive question, or any, any of the sort, asking with a smile on my face, but I do think it's an important question to ask. When we were speaking of the internal things that are, that are budgeted here, a lot of those, the, the things that were mentioned, were paying for a controller, paying for council. If this is run by the city and the county, I mean, and why, I mean, we, we have those, yeah? Like, why, why don't, like, why, why do we need to have a controller on the, on the CIB that's, that's hired and paid for?
Let me, let me, let me, the, the, the inter-local established the CIB as a neutral, neutral body, operating, I described today, the four elected bodies, the council, the mayor, county council, the county commissioners, are, are parents who gave birth to us. So, we as a CIB are your creation, and your creation said that we are a neutral body, established and charged with doing, with doing certain things. State statute that guides us in capital improvement boards states that we have the ability to, among other things, hire an attorney, hire a controller, who is in fact the Assistant Treasurer of a CIB, as well as the auditor of a CIB. And I, and I think the question about, and let me paraphrase, and you can correct me if this assumption is, is false. Why would we need to hire attorneys? Can the city do this? Or, I guess that same question could be asked about lots of projects. Annexation. Who, who does, who does the city contracting with to handle annexation? It's not being handled internally. The, the question's been asked in the past, why aren't we using the city controller as our controller? Again, it goes back to the neutrality of our being established as a quasi, not quasi, as an independent body that you've created. Statute says that, and the ordinance, the county ordinance and the inter-local agreement all say that elected officials or employees of the city and the county are not permitted to serve as members of the CIB. The controller is the Assistant Treasurer of the CIB. The controller is the auditor for the CIB. In order to be the Assistant Treasurer of the CIB, you'd have to be eligible to serve on the CIB. It's not an appointed position. But we've been trying to create separation of duties, separation of responsibilities to maintain the neutrality that you underscored when you gave birth to us. So, that's, that, hopefully that, that answers your question. There's been quite a bit of staff, staff, by staff time, I mean attorney time. I want to acknowledge Jim Whitlatch with Bungar Robertson, who has been working for us since November, and I remind Mr. Whitlatch every month that he, he has billable but uncollectible hours to this date, that the number of hours he's put in on that project, and we've never been able to pay him yet, and that's part of the reason for your approval of this appropriation.
May I ask a follow-up directly related to this? And, and I think this, this illustrates maybe the point that, that both Councilmember Flaherty and I are trying to make, which is, could we at this moment, and, and again, please take no offense, Mr. Underwood, that, can we add a line item, say, actually, we don't think that Mr. Underwood should be paid what he's getting paid to be, to be the controller of the CIB, the same way that we might for a city department?
Well, the, the city council is not the, not the hiring body for hiring the controller. The CIB is. So, it's the CIB by statutory authority, by authority you've given us as an inter-local, and by county ordinance, we have the ability to hire an attorney and to hire a controller. And that includes negotiating rates of, of pay, and, and we will submit through a process that the Corporation Counsel and your city controller and our controller have agreed on as an appropriate way to submit claims for payment, which is claims are submitted to our board in public meetings. We did this today. In public meetings, we review those claims, we review the charges against those claims, we approve those claims, we vote on them. Then they will be submitted to the city controller. The city controller will vet those claims, and if those claims, those claims can then be paid out of this appropriation that we're asking you to consider.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Operations and maintenance for the convention center currently is funded primarily through the innkeeper's tax. Is that right?
It's my understanding, yes. Yes.
Is that, will that continue to be the plan going forward, or are we anticipating some of the food and beverage tax dollars needed for operations and maintenance, other resources? Can anybody speak to that?
Yeah, it's, it is, we've had no discussion about that. There's, there's no plan going forward that would have those expenses paid out of anything other than those, than the innkeeper's tax collections.
I guess I'm wondering, if there's not like a large surplus currently in the innkeeper's tax, it seems like we'll have a shortfall when we have a bigger building for operations and maintenance needs. So, wondering what, what our plan would be in the period while this tax still exists, and then especially after 2045, I guess.
Yeah, and, and again, I want to be candid, we, we have not gotten that far along in the process yet, so we have, we have not gotten to a point of determining in, currently we're projecting we might be able to be open by the fourth quarter of 2026, so there's been no discussion yet about what happens with operational and maintenance funding after, after the fourth quarter of 2026, moving into 2027. So, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, I see some others nearby who might want to weigh in as well, but I appreciate that answer.
Oh.
I'm just wondering.
You know, Margie used to correct me all the time when I worked here, so let me just, let me just step aside.
Yeah, yeah, I'm in love with her. No, I just want to be sensitive to the comments that you guys have made, because honestly, we did have conversations, very candid conversations, early on about, why do we need another controller? Because we have Jessica, and we've got county attorneys and city attorneys, and I think everybody wants to be as, as frugal as we can be, and to be cognizant of the expenses, because we certainly don't want to eat up a bunch of our food and beverage taxes on paying controllers and attorneys, you know, layers and layers of attorneys. So, one thing I think that we all can do, that's the CIB, as well as the city, as well as the county, just kind of keep an eye on that. I mean, to the extent that we can, we can offload work on a county attorney or a city attorney who's already getting paid a salary, and there are, so we, we probably ought to be very sensitive about that, and watch that. As you guys, they've said before, they're going to have to come back and ask for more food and beverage dollars, and so I think that's probably a conversation we should have again and look at it. I will tell you that Jeff is going to be running the bills that they're going to be approved at their public meetings, the CIB meetings, then they're going to go to the controller for approval, so there are two layers of that, so we can keep an eye on those expenses and see if they feel like they're out of control, or higher than we would like. And I don't know if you guys want to comment on that.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I hate to think we're talking about our expenses being out of control. We're, you know, about four or five months into this, into this project. I would also point out that a great deal of the expenses that have been accrued to date for internal professional services for an attorney, for instance, because today we approved a relationship with a, with a, an owner's representative, will be transferred over to an owner's representative. We've been doing this without staff. I mean, we've, it's, it's, we, we haven't, although we, we have the authority, if you will, to hire staff, an executive director and other staff, we haven't done it. We're, we're trying to work as conservatively and frugally as we can. So, there's been a lot of work that's been done by our attorney that, in the future, you might see some of that being shifted over to and find that within claims for services from an owner's representative. So, we're simply moving this process forward as expeditiously as, as we can, and frankly, as frugally as, as we can do it. I would, I don't mean to cast aspersions on anybody, but I would put what we're being charged by a local attorney's firm for work that attorney's doing for us up against any claims anybody sees from the city for work that's being done by attorneys hired outside this city to do city work. So, I, I think we're being extremely conservative with what we're asking.
Councilmember Asari?
Yes, sir, and, and first also, before I say what I'm saying, it's, I think, important to note that the vast majority of you on the CIB are volunteers, and I'm so grateful for your service to the city, so thank you for that. My point is actually not so much about frugality, or, you know, whether or not professionals should be paid for, for the work that they're doing. I think the, the, the point that, that I'm trying to make is that I'm concerned around, and you've, I think, made very clear that, you know, you are our children, and so maybe I'm, maybe I'm questioning our own-- And so maybe I'm, maybe I'm questioning our own DNA, but is, is about the need to, to put stage gates, if you will, like to actually put, you know, I, I, I mentioned this notion of sort of progressive, you know, realization of what we're doing, that in time, you'll come and give us more details, and I get that. And that you'll come and ask for more money, and I get that. But there comes a point where the decisions that we make build in other decisions with them, whether we like it or not, and it's, you can't unpack that later. And so when I look at, when I look at an initial budget that says, look, you, you've already approved $250,000, so, so this is just roughly how we'll spend it, it gives me a little bit of pause, because I feel like we should be more involved, because I think we've all made meaningful, I'm making a comment, I should be making questions, sorry. So here's the question. Here's the question. Have we put any money towards the creation of, I think it was called the building allocation or something like that, within the CIB? I think there's some sort of a process that needs to be funded. I might be miss-
Oh, the building corporation, is that what?
Yeah, the building corporation, thank you.
And the, the building corporation will be appointed by the city when the, when the conventions, when the convention center is transferred from county ownership to city ownership. A building corporation will be created or will exist at that time that will handle the bonding issues. And I know, and I don't want to speak for Corporation Counsel Rice, but I know that as we've talked about this, that the city may very well come forward, and I would expect that they would, and say that they have needs for a request for a budget or pulling down from the, from the food and beverage tax to pay for needs that the building corporation may have. That's not part of the capital improvement board. It's a separate entity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions about Resolution 2024-10? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I think the memo accompanying the budget mentioned the possibility of an updated market analysis, if necessary. Could you share a little bit more about what year the original market analysis was conducted and whether or not the CIB has, has opined on whether, whether it would like to follow through on an updated market analysis?
The, the market analysis was done in, in 2019. The last report that I believe we received was in, was basically, was actually in 2020. As we've talked, we've talked with the firm that created that market analysis for us and asked them, actually, they asked, they came to us and said they would like to propose updating that proposal for us in consultation with Schmidt and Associates. We've, we've been uncertain, not about the value of market analysis, but the value of the update at this point in terms of what, what things may have changed. For instance, there, there are suggestions that we need to reconsider the fact that Columbus and Terre Haute have since 2019 brought convention centers online. Our, our reaction to that has been Bloomington's the second most popular destination in the state for conferences, for tourism. Whether any of us believe that Terre Haute's convention center or Columbus's convention center would draw away from the Bloomington tourism or attraction, attractiveness of our convention center. Terre Haute just opened their convention center while we were all talking about this and just announced their casino is open. So I'm going to guess some people might want to go to conventions in Terre Haute because there's a casino attached to the convention center. I don't know that that's competitive. I don't know if the Indiana Library Association is going to choose Terre Haute because of the convention center over Bloomington, because they can, they can come to Bloomington. But the fact of the matter is, depending on what update we might want of a market analysis, the price tag for it can be a minimum of $37,000 and a maximum of $125,000. So we have chosen to proceed without doing that at this point, because we, we aren't, aren't certain there's enough value to it, and it certainly has a high cost that we're not prepared to pay at this point.
Kind of, thank you.
Do you have a, a follow-up question?
An unrelated additional question.
All right, well, well, I'll ask a follow-up question. So, I mean, the market analysis is, is pretty basic to even moving ahead. So I'm a little shocked that you wouldn't update the analysis that occurred pre-pandemic and before two other nearby cities opened convention centers. Is the pandemic not a factor in, do you think that, that changed the, the market analysis?
The, the pandemic is certainly a factor in considerations for design of a convention center. So we have heard both from Schmidt Associates and, and from Convergence, who's an architecture firm that works with Schmidt, that there are many things we need to consider differently than we, than we considered before because of the pandemic. For instance, virtual attendance at convention centers. But, but I have not heard strong, a strong proponent from Schmidt Associates and from Convergence that we need now to update that market analysis. That market analysis may also come into play later on when the city moves towards going to the bond market. And it may be a, a strong factor in, in the bond market analysis. But we, we have just not been convinced at this point that we need to redo the market analysis from four years ago at, at the cost, at its cost.
I see. Councilmember Flaherty, did you have another question? Oh, Councilmember Rallo, I see a new hand. Let's go to Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. I had just some specifics about the budget. So this budget is for 2024. Does it, by the end of the year, does it, anything not expended? Does it revert to the fund, back to the fund? That's one question. The other is, when would you be anticipating coming back to council for, for another budget, for the 2025 budget? Would it be a, I mean, we're in April now. So could you tell me a little bit about the timeline?
We would anticipate, obviously, in the process, the city is not going to write us a check for $250,000, as we described. As we incur expenses, the CIB will review those. They will approve them via Claims Register that gets signed. We then submit that to the controller's office, and they will cut us a check for that specific amount, and then we'll disperse those funds. So it'll just be a dollar for dollar. So if, for some reason, we didn't exceed the $250,000, it remains in the food and beverage fund, just like any other fund, it, it would fall if it doesn't get it. If we need additional funds, either us or, or the city, and we would work together. So we'll be updating our budget over the next month or so to anticipate out through the end of the year. And if we need additional funds, we'll work with, with Margie and Controller McClellan to both come back. So we just do it once. We won't, so you don't have to have two different appropriations. We would come for an additional appropriation. Together, we would both present for 2024 if we need additional funds. We will be slotted into the same 2025 budget process. So we'll appear before you, I assume, in August, probably on Monday night after the controller's office budget, because the funds will be budgeted in their budget, and we'll present what the request is on our behalf. And then if they need additional funds, they would have that in, in there as well. So we anticipate we'll be on the same budget schedule as, as the city is.
I see. Could you explain what the insurance line is?
Yeah, because we're a separate body politic, we have to have insurance coverage, so we would have to buy that through the market. For bonding of our board members and-
What risk? What risk you, are you insuring for?
Bond, for the board members and for staff.
Uh-huh, okay.
Much like you guys are covered through the city's insurance policy, our board and our, our people would be covered.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
I see Eric Spoonmore, the treasurer of the CIB, is on camera with his hand raised. Mr. Spoonmore, do you have a response to one of the questions that has been posed?
I did, yeah. Thank you, President Piedmont Smith. Sorry I couldn't be there with you in person tonight. I was on dad duty with basketball, with our daughter. But I wanted to address Councilmember Flaherty's question from earlier regarding a shortfall potential in the future for the innkeeper's tax. And the way that that tax is used at this point is it's kind of split up. There's a portion that goes to fund operations and maintenance, as Mr. Flaherty had indicated. And then there's a portion that funds marketing, tourism, destination marketing kinds of things through Visit Bloomington. So we don't anticipate any change to that, to that equation. I think what will allow for greater revenue to support the maintenance and operations, though, is that when we have these new conventions happening in the community, because of the expansion, we're going to see a lot more overnight stays at hotels in addition to expansion of hotels. We know we're going to have to have a new, pretty significant hotel attached to the new expanded convention center, which is also going to significantly boost innkeeper tax revenue. So we do see those innkeeper tax revenues, or we're, we're projecting that into the future. Those are substantially going to increase due to the influx of new hotel nights and stays that would support the additional need for maintenance and operations at the convention center. So just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Just to follow up on what Mr. Spoonmore said, can you send us, do we have access to those reports about anticipated revenue and tax increases? Can you send those to us?
Yeah, I, I think that, I know there's some projections that, that are out there. I will check with, you know, our, our friends over at Visit Bloomington, Mike McAfee, who keeps a really close eye on that stuff, and I know has a lot of data on it. We can get all of that information for you as well easily. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. This is kind, kind of related to my question about operations and maintenance and other funding sources besides the food and beverage tax. I seem to recall, four or five years ago, in some of the conversations, you know, proposals for a parking garage at like $15 million, supported by TIF funding, for instance. And so I guess I want to ask for the opinion of the CIB about the anticipated need for or request of other public funding sources outside the food and beverage tax and the innkeeper's tax. Is that something that's, yeah, assumed, or you're committed to not having, or what are your thoughts on that?
In, in 2019, there was, Schmidt was involved in three different designs, and one of them was for a, a separate standalone parking garage for a convention center. As we've moved forward with Schmidt, that is not a contractual relationship that we've entered into with them. We're not asking them for that. All of that was before the Fourth Street Garage was enlarged and opened up. So at this, at this point, there is nothing, nothing on our table that would suggest that we are asking Schmidt, or, or that we're asking for a design of an additional parking garage.
Okay, and so to broaden the scope a little bit, I guess specifically, does the, does the CIB anticipate all funding needs to be wholly contained within the food and beverage tax revenues? Or do you expect that there might be scenarios in which you're asking for the city to apply TIF funding or CREED dollars, or ARPA dollars, or other sources of, of funding that we may have to supplement the capital that, that a bond supported by the food and beverage tax would allow?
And I, and I would add to, funding from the food and beverage tax eventually bonds, the bonding supporting the project as well. We, as a CIB, are not anticipating asking for any, any of those kinds of additional subsidies. In fact, we are, we're, we're very much resolved to live within the finite budget that's created as we work with the architects, and we understand what, what funding's available through the combination of the food and beverage tax and the bond. And that will tell us what we can afford to design and to build. So we're not, we're not, we're not anticipating those subsidies that you're asking about. And by not anticipating them, we've simply said we don't intend to ask for those. So we're, we're going to work within the budget we have.
Okay, thank you.
Questions about Resolution 2024-10? Councilmember Flaherty?
I'm getting close to, to done. Thank you. One is about the, the letter of intent from 2017 that was included as materials, if not in this packet in the work session that we had last Friday. It's signed by Mayor Hamilton, attested by our clerk, I believe. Was that something that actually came through the city council? Or is that purely an executive branch letter of intent? It spelled out some detailed things like, you know, that we would assume a 92.5% allocation of the city's food and beverage tax portion for the project, and reserve maybe 7.5% for related expenses. So, yeah. Mr. Lucas, or whoever knows the answer to that question, would be great.
Yes, as far as I know, that did not come through the city council. I know at least one subsequent appropriation ordinance referenced that document, which was what pointed me in, in the direction of it. And although that wasn't approved by the council, that was included in the, in the materials for last week's work session, simply to try to give the council as complete a picture as possible of what some of the other parties involved, the county, would be expecting toward the project.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
If I might add, having been involved in this process on each of the committees since 2017, I used to refer to those agreements tongue-in-cheek as the memoranda of misunderstanding, because there was never, never agreement ever that came out of any of those memoranda of misunderstanding about what they meant, how they were going to be implemented. And in fact, they were, the, the lack of agreement was a factor in how these conversations ended in 2019.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Question, question about the market analysis. Who did the first one? And you're saying that was in 20, was that in 2020, or?
The last one that we received was in 2020. It was Hundon Strategic Partnerships, I think was the formal name. Rob Hundon is the owner in principle, and we've had several conversations with him recently.
Okay. I, how mu, how much does that cost?
Pardon me?
How much does that cost, a market analysis?
Well, in our last conversation with Mr. Hundon, he indicated that a, that a full market analysis, a, a complete do-over, again, could cost about $125,000. We asked him to pair that back to perhaps some specific areas. And he paired it back and said, this one would cost you about $37,000. We asked him to pair it back a little more, and he did, and said the paired back one cost $32,000. And, and, and the advice that we had in the council, we saw, was that we didn't need to do it at this time.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I didn't know if it would be just like a lot, lot, lot of money, or what we were looking at. I, I guess just, I mean, I just Googled quickly, like, convention center attendance post-pandemic. And I guess, I think we are just living in a very different world. So I feel like the market is different now, and I just, I just wonder, I mean, we're talking about spending so much money on this, that is it, might it not be worth it to do that again? I mean, some of these are just saying we're still 20% below pre-pandemic. One said we're at 65% pre-pandemic. And I just, I guess I am worried that, I mean, I think we have a market analysis that is looking at a period that absolutely doesn't exist anymore. So, I mean, what would, who really decides if another market analysis is needed? Like, would that go in this budget? Or, or is it just up to you all, and then we, I mean, you know, I don't know, I don't know what happens exactly?
Well, as I, as I said, we've relied on working with Schmidt Associates and Convergence, their partner, on discussing, is it appropriate now to do a market analysis? And we've relied on their opinion that, that they don't feel it's necessary at this point in time. I will tell you, the CIB will pay $125,000 for a market analysis if the council wants to approve that as an additional part of our budget. So if you want to give us another $125,000 out of food and beverage tax for a market analysis, we'll be happy to accept it, and we'll engage them in a market analysis. What they're telling us is, is the time, the time when you'll need that is when you go to the bond market, which we're, we're hoping is, is sometime by this fall. So we're simply saying perhaps it can be kicked down the road to that point in time.
Okay, if I could just, is that, would that be before or after design?
Pardon me?
Would that be before or after design of an expansion? But if you kick it down the road to pre-bond, when, like, when you're ready to go to the bond market, is that before or after the expansion has been designed?
The, the bond market step would be after we have a design to, after we've approved the design, yes. The bond market step is, is, would, would, would be after that.
Okay, but we could also allocate $32,000 or $37,000 for that analysis and do like the more bare bones. bones analysis, right? You were saying you asked the consultant to pare it down and?
Yeah, the bare bones analysis, the $37,000 bare bones. Could we use it? Again, I'm relying on the architects we've hired who say they don't believe it's necessary. The Hyundai and Strategies has approached this again and said that bond market, or the, not bond market analysis, the market analysis may be helpful to individuals who are thinking about responding to our RFQs for a hotel, that hoteliers may be interested in, in what a market analysis might look like right now. I would come back to, as we're working with Schmidt and with Convergence and we, and, and they are factoring in, and they are professionals in this field, factoring in post-pandemic impacts on convention centers as they're seeing that happen, we, that, that is being included. But it is, it is our opinion and their opinion that, that a bond market analysis right now would have to do with the economic impact of a convention center and not with the design of a convention center. It would have to do with the economic impact of the fact there are, what has changed is Terre Haute has a convention center and Columbus has a convention center. And it's, it's the opinion of those we work with that they don't believe those are mitigating factors that change the outlook in Bloomington, Indiana.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thanks.
I wanted to follow up on that. So talking with our local convention center leaders, Mike McAfee and Talisha Kopick, has there been, has the demand for conventions here in Bloomington, Monroe County been the same as pre-pandemic?
I, I believe, I believe they've, I believe the information they've provided and Eric's on the Zoom and he can help if I misstate this, is that, is that they are seeing returns of interest in, in conventions to pre-pandemic levels. What they are still telling us is that they are still having to turn away potential conventions because we don't have either the size to host them or the hotel space to host them. So those things haven't changed since 2019. And we clearly don't have the ability to attract larger conventions until we address that through an expansion and through an additional hotel.
Yes, that's right. I have, you know, I've, I've had numerous conversations, myself in the business community and with civic organizations too, that, you know, this has been, you know, something that the community has been looking for in terms of being able to host more of our nonprofit organizations, community and civic organizations, having events at the convention center, the inadequate facilities there in the space just don't allow them to reach their full maximum potential in terms of fundraising events and things like that. So, you know, that's one really important aspect of this project as well too. It's going to be a civic center that will serve our community organizations better than what we're able to do at this point right now. I think that's really important considering how community oriented we are here in Bloomington with these types of nonprofit organizations that do so much good in our community. I was actually talking to one of our public safety workers, firefighters, just over, during the eclipse, and he was asking me, you know, what is the status of the convention center expansion? Because the Indiana State Firefighters Association had been looking at Bloomington this last year as a, a, a place to have their convention, but the inadequate facilities just couldn't meet the space that they had. And so I know the, the firefighters here were really disappointed by that. We would love to host a convention like that during the week. And that's what we're really missing out on is that weekday traffic that will support our downtown, support our businesses. I've mentioned it to you before, we had six businesses close this last winter. And, you know, a lot of those folks, I, I've talked to them as, as chamber president and understanding, you know, what can we do better to support our downtown food and beverage businesses? And a lot of them, well, all of them believed that, you know, this, this convention center expansion and having the additional weekday traffic would have gone a long way to alleviating some of those very difficult decisions they had to make to close their doors. So just some anecdotal, yeah.
Are you saying that you hear reported from the people who run the convention center that they are turning away just as many conventions as pre-pandemic because of a lack of space?
Uh, I, yeah, I, I don't have all the, you know, we, we, I, I think it would be good to have the people who collect that data and are looking at it and analyzing it on a daily basis to answer those questions. I don't have that at my fingertips right now, but, you know, based on all the meetings that I'm in with Downtown Bloomington, Inc., with Visit Bloomington on their board, that's what we're hearing, is that there's a huge unmet demand. I don't know if it's the same as pre-pandemic. It may be more. It, in fact, you know, it very likely could be more demand now than what it was pre-pandemic. Maybe we need to get that market analysis done.
Wait a minute, Mr. Spoonmore, are you now saying that you actually think we should have a new market analysis?
I, I think if, if the city council would like to have a market analysis done, it's a, that would be a good idea. We just want to be really good partners to all the elected officials involved with this. If there's, you know, if it's your desire to have a market analysis done, we'd be, I think we'd be more than happy to engage with the folks who do that.
All right.
Let me, let me point out, Mr. Spoonmore is one of seven members of the Capital Improvement Board. I'm not arguing against his point, but certainly that'd be something we'd have to talk about and want to consult with others about. And I, and again, I don't, I, I think the question is timing. You know, is it, is an analysis done now? We don't have the budget to do it. Happy, happy if you want us to, to request additional funds to make that happen for you. Or is it going to happen in the fall, in a few months, towards the bond market, towards the, going out to the bond market?
All right. Any other questions? And please consider it is 9:09 and we have four ordinances to consider this evening. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I've considered that. With this budget and that it says architects and, you know, looking like it's for like through to the design and phase two architecture and engineering services. So is the plan to come out of this funding with a design for the convention center?
Is, is it coming out of the $250,000? I, I think Corporation Counsel Rice mentioned earlier that we have an ability now to run through previously established purchase orders that have already been approved and we can pay for some architectural services in that fashion.
Is there, I know we have a lot of public engagement around like greenways and putting in speed humps, concrete on the, on a street. Is there public engagement around a design process for a convention center?
There, there will be, yes.
Okay. And what does that, is that like meetings, like charrettes and?
I, I won't, I won't promise that we'll have five charrettes like we did in 2019. I think we'll rely on the, the building owner who, part of the proposal for the owner representative, I'm sorry, is community engagement and how we do that and how we outreach to the community to, so, so we're making certain we have public input into the process.
Okay. Thank you. And about the market analysis that was done four years ago, the firm that does that, do they specialize in convention centers?
Convention centers and, and hotel projects.
Okay. And you maybe don't know the answer to this, has there ever been a market analysis by that firm that said this is a bad idea?
I'm sorry, the what?
Has there ever been an analysis by that firm that said this is a bad idea? I know that's crazy, but like has the, I, like in this book, Convention Center, yeah, in the book, it's convention.
I apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm trying, this is like at home, I'm trying to read closed captions because I, because I don't have my.
I'm sorry. In this book, Convention Center Follies, it does, it does say that this man who's studied convention centers for decades has never seen a market analysis that said, that did not recommend a convention center.
I don't, I, I don't know. I can tell you that the market analysis, the market analysis is, is a straightforward report on objective facts. There's not a recommendation coming out of the market analysis that says you should use, we're telling you to move forward with the project. It's one, it's one piece of information, like other pieces of information, that, that we use, that we've used to move forward and that we could use in the future to attract, for instance, hoteliers. We've already had, in response to an RFQ, we put out for hoteliers and we actually provided them with the PowerPoint presentations that were done by Schmidt, by Convergence and by Hyundai. So we're providing that information to hoteliers and they've reached back out and asked for some, asked for some interpretation of the market analysis from 2020. They, no one's asked us to do a new one for them. So we haven't had, and, and before this, before I forget to mention this, I'd like to, if I may, I, I want to show we're paying attention. When we put the RFQ out for hoteliers, part of the RFQ was we want them to demonstrate and understand that we have an expectation that, that they will provide and how they will provide shuttle service activity. So what are you as a hotelier going to do to provide shuttle service for conventioneers? On the same token, as we begin to move forward to attract conventions, we're going to ask conventions, what are your plans to provide transportation for your attendees to get to Bloomington if they're coming into the Indianapolis Airport or whatever? So we, we are listening, you know, we are, we, we, we want to make sure we're hearing, we want to make sure that we're listening well and that we're addressing legitimate issues that are coming up.
Thank you. Now that you mentioned that, will the hotel have to build a parking garage? Is that in the RFP for the hotels?
To build a parking garage? No. No, there's no mention of, of the hotel building a parking garage. Was that your question? And it's not?
It is my question.
Yeah. And it's not, at, at this point, and it's, I, I have to be careful because I say the wrong thing sometimes. What we've done so far is a request for qualifications.
Okay.
So we want to know, what are your qualifications to build a hotel? That will be followed by a request for proposals, for a very specific proposal from them where we will ask them, what is it you're going to build? You know, what are you, what do you expect from us? They're, they're already reacting and saying, they, they want to know, are we providing the land on which they would build a hotel? I would expect that, that as part of a negotiated process with hoteliers, they may, they may say there are other incentives they're seeking. We may agree or not agree with that. That will all be part of a negotiated process.
Okay. Thank you. And does the CIB decide that? If, you know, does the CIB decide if the city is willing to give up, to give free land to a hotel?
Is that?
Well, I mean, is that something that the council would decide or is that something that, you know, that that's how we want to use our money or?
Well, if the, if the hotel is built on the east side, and I'm bad at directions too, on the east side of College, that's property owned by the county. Is the county willing to say their, they, they will donate their property for this project for a hotel? I don't know that the city council will weigh in on that. So, you know, those, all, all those are things to be determined, which is why it's important now for us to analyze all of the site options and which of those site options are best for us moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry to, I just have one more though about if the, if, if, you know, the council here is saying, there's been rumors from some, right, that they will not approve a parking garage in this project, could the county decide to build a parking garage on their own land for this project?
I don't know.
People are shaking their head yes behind you.
I do know what we've written into the, I believe into the interlocal is that if at some point down the road, there is something the county wants to do and pay for on their own, that, because we come to you for approval of our budget. If the county decides that there is something else down the road that they have agreed that they will pay for, independent of this process, that'll be something the county will determine or decide or discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I think regardless, everything would have to go through city planning since, since all of this is within city jurisdiction.
Yeah, there are, I'm sorry, there, there are multiple processes that are going to be involved in all of this.
I would appreciate if we could limit to the number of people answering questions here because it's getting late and it's getting a little bit confusing with other people jumping in. So let's focus on Mr. Weikart. If, if he wants to refer to one of the other individuals who are available, then he could do that. Are there other questions? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Is, is this the la, if we approve this budget this evening, would, is this the last time we would see you all before a design is finalized in terms of an, an approval of some kind, a formal step? I know we can see you anytime and have coffee or come to your meetings, but?
I don't, I don't, it's our intention to analyze over the next couple of months what else we need to come back to you about. And we will probably do that in concert with, with the administration who may also have requests for the food and beverage tax. You know, understanding then we have to go through the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission and then come back, come back to you again. I don't, I, I don't know if we will be back before that design step is completed, if that's, if that's, I don't want to lose track of your question, but I don't know.
No, that, that was the question. And I think the related follow-up is, yeah, I've shared previously in meetings that I, I cannot, for instance, in good conscience, approve bonds for a building that is connected to direct use of fossil fuels for space and water heating. It goes against our city goals and priorities and adopted policies. Same goes for like lead certification. We have a green building ordinance that we hold ourselves to and I believe this project should be held to the same standards. So as a hypothetical, I mean, those aren't firm commitments that the CIB has made, to my knowledge.
No.
We are at something of a stage gate in this moment and I wonder about the possibility of like postponing by a month so that we could actually get written agreement on a number of kind of foundational conditions about no additional public subsidy apart from food and beverage tax, for instance, no, you know, no, no direct use of fossil fuels on site, lead certification, things like that, that the council might wish to express in terms of its policy priorities in this project that are frankly information you would want to know and need to know before completing a design. But this is kind of the process. We don't have another step in the process where the council has actual authority to make a go, no-go decision. So I guess the stage gate again is kind of the best term here. And I'm worried that we're plowing through, through the gate without actually doing the, the diligence of review that is warranted at this stage. So what would be your recommendation to address like the types of things I just raised in terms of how, how, how the council should express its policy preference or even requirements, you know, for future bonding, for instance, to the CIB? I think we could pass a resolution, of course, outside this process or after this vote, but?
Right.
What are your thoughts?
Well, for, in, in partial response to your question, it would be foolhardy of us to come and bring a design to you and catch you by surprise with that design and say, here's what we've designed, you know, we need, we need for you to bond it without having been quite aware of what you think the important issues are around that design. And I, and I, I would again repeat, we have public meetings and we will have a public process as we move forward with that design concept and, and an opportunity for all to weigh in on what's important to them. I think if the, and Corporation Counsel Rice can correct me, but I think if you're talking about specific directives to the CIB about design, you may very well be talking about whether you want to enter into amending the interlocal agreement because right now the interlocal agreement doesn't speak to that. The interlocal agreement simply says that the CIB moves forward with site selection, with design, with construction. Obviously we come back to you for approval for budget. If you want to put amendments or restrictions on any part of that process, I assume that's, that's a negotiation you would want to enter into with all the parties in the interlocal agreement. You can correct me?
I do want to address just that one point. There is a section, I don't have it in front of me, maybe Stephen has it, but there is a section that says that the city and the build, the building corp that the city creates will enter into an agreement if necessary with the CIB for the design, during the design and construction phase. So I think some of those things that you're talking about could be part of that agreement in terms of the objectives, some of those things. That's a part of that.
And that's yet to be, yet to be created, that agreement? A potential agreement?
Yeah. It has yet to be created and the owner of the convention center will be that building corp that the city creates. So all that has to happen before we come back to you and ask you for approval of the bonds.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before? Any other questions before we go to the public? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I wanted to perhaps give Corporation Council Rice a, a chance to weigh in on the process regarding city-owned land utilized for this purpose. I think you were ready to maybe add something.
Yeah, yeah, there is, I was going to tell you that Mayor Thompson has reached out to the commissioners to talk to them about all of the land that, you know, the county owns and the city owns, and to talk about whether the city should get reimbursement of the $7 million that was spent from TIF funds. This was largely a project that was going to be paid for with food and beverage dollars, and so that conversation about, should the $7 million or any portion of that be reimbursed? That, that meeting hasn't taken place yet, but that is a conversation that's going to happen. And I also wanted to address the question about parking. I do think that early on, there was some conversation about a hotel perhaps having been building, building some of its own parking. That was a conversation a couple of years ago. So I do think the conversation about parking needs will inevitably have to be part of this conversation, and we certainly want to make sure that we hear from the council about what you think about that and what your priorities are, because your approval of the bonds and the payment of this 20-year debt is, you know, that has, that's a requirement. So we obviously want to know what you guys think.
Any other questions? Let's go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wants to comment on Resolution 2024-10? Mr. Lucas, would you like to make the announcement on Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public joining via Zoom that would like to speak to this item, please raise your hand to let us know, or send a chat to the meeting host, and we will recognize you that way. I do see one hand raised at the moment.
Okay, let's go ahead with the one Zoom participant.
First up is Olivia.
You'll have up to, please state your full name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Yes, hi. Apologies, this, my Zoom defaults to my wife's name. This is Peter Dorfman, and I have a point of view on what you're discussing. I, I know this is about a design project, but I think this point of view should be part of the public record even at this stage. I, I think rather than the design process, you should be talking about whether or not to proceed with the expansion of the convention center at all. And my, my reason for opposing the expansion of the convention center is really pretty simple, and I, I wanted to get it out. I, I'm not the only taxpayer in Bloomington whose head is spinning at the number of times you've gone to the bond market on our behalf in the eight and a half years that I've lived here. You're about to do so again if you proceed with construction for tens of millions of dollars, and a bond is future debt. And when you, if you're talking about tens of million dollars, I, I think you should be talking about something that will address a fundamental problem in Bloomington, and not something that will simply yield increased revenue for the restaurants and the hotels. A fundamental problem in Bloomington is that we have too many people who work here and can't afford to live here. And that is because many of them, most of them, are working subsistence wage, service sector jobs. And the nature of the convention business is that it produces more low-wage service center jobs, and not a lot of high-paid jobs, which are what we really need in Bloomington to address our fundamental cost of, of living issues. And I don't believe that this project, at, at the high cost that it will incur, addresses that fundamental need, or really, any fundamental need. It's good news for restaurants and hotels, but it really only aggravates the problem that we have in Bloomington, which is, again, that we are primarily a low-wage market, and that's not what we should be aspiring to be going forward. So that's my objection. I don't think that the convention center expansion addresses anything that's so fundamental to the needs of this town that we need to be allocating tens of millions of dollars to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to comment?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, and I don't see anybody in chambers, so we'll come back to council members for comments or motion. Councilmember Rallo?
Comments or questions?
Hopefully, we're at comments. If you have a follow-up question, I suppose I will allow it.
Just maybe briefly, well, just in response to Mr. Dorfman's, you know, statement, which I don't disagree with in, in part, although I wanted to make a clarification that, you know, this tax is derived from restaurants and bars, and it was made, we, we went forward with, with their explicit input to establish it, and, and it was, it was for this specific purpose. So it's not coming from the general fund or something. I, I want to make sure that people watching at home know that. So it's not fungible, we're not going to use the tax money to build, you know, trails or something like that. But I'm, one thing I am concerned about is the bonding capacity of the city, and, you know, we're anticipating if this is a 20-year bond, I'm concerned about the interest rates, of course, and the, you know, what that's going to add. But I'm concerned also about the bonding capacity. We're relying also on the fact that restaurants and bars will continue, hopefully expand, and that tax will continue to service that debt. So there's that component, but I'm concerned also about the bonding capacity of the city. Where are we in terms of, of that, Mr. Underwood?
Well, this is a revenue bond, and it's based solely on the revenues of food and beverage. So as I've explained in the past, with a revenue bond, it, it does not have a property tax to it. It will not impact the city's general fund property tax base rate debt that they can issue. There is a limit for that, but this does not apply to that limit, because it's a revenue bond. And because it's a revenue bond, you have what's called coverage. So you typically look at coverage that is 1 and 1/4 to 1.75 times more than the debt service, so that there is sufficient monies available, even if there's a downturn, to service the debt. So you have to build that into the calculations, and as Marjorie has said, I, I know we've had that done by Buzz Krone and his firm several times, and assuming they move forward with, with him as well, he'll update that again, and it's based on those scenarios. So they look at, what are the current market conditions, what would be the rating of the bond, what is the capacity based on coverage of 1 and 1/4, 1 and 1/2, 1.75, and then a recommendation between them and the underwriter of what level that should be at, and that impacts it. So the more coverage you have, obviously, the better interest there is in the ra, in, in buying those bonds and the rating of that bond. And Bloomington and Monroe County both have very strong bond ratings for both general fund property debt and for revenue debt as well.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to move to council comment? Who would like to make comments on this resolution?
Just a quick one.
Councilmember Asari?
Yeah, generally, and I've said this before, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of the idea of, of, of expanding the convention center. I, I think our challenge is, remains our ability to, to build consensus around the idea, and consensus to me, I say it a lot here, is, is this notion, yeah, I do, is this notion that we can get to some agreement that nobody has any reason to say no to. And I think that Councilmember Flaherty brought up many points, I think, that are really relevant, I think that resonate with all of us. I think in the past, Councilmember Rallo has brought up a lot of very important points around what the space is used for when it's not a convention center, et cetera. I think in all of that, we want to have input, right, obviously, in, in thinking about how this space, because of the huge costs that we're talking about here, you know, is, is serves our community for the long term. But so, so I think with that being said, I just, I know it might have been said that, you know, there might be a consideration of maybe moving this down. I don't think we should slow down, I think, a process that has already taken, you know, six years or whatever. But, but I do think moving forward, it's really, really important that, that this, that, that our interactions be, I think, a little bit, have more detail, and then, that, again, you know, I've expressed my, my concerns around us sort of agreeing to things that I think have a lot of assumptions baked in. And so, you know, I have a lot of concerns about what happens if, it seems to me that the, we're essentially assuming that either the city or the county is going to give up land to make this work. I don't think we've answered questions yet on what actually happens if, if we, if, if that's not the case, and we want, you know, money to be transferred. Does this even make this viable? If we have to, you know, use food and beverage to pay off the things that we bought with the TIF, it's, it's, there are a lot of questions that we still, I think, have to answer, and, you know, I'm really concerned about, you know, proceeding in ways that, that have sort of built-in yeses in the future in them. But, but, you know, I say all that as a, as a hope to, as we continue with this process. I mean, it's just, I think, keep that in mind as we're coming, again, but, I mean, I will be voting, voting yes if we, if we do vote on this. But, but yeah, I think just general thoughts there.
Thank you. Other council members? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. First, just really want to express my gratitude for all the work that's gone into this over the years. I know we're asking hard questions on a process that's taken a long time and have reservations, which I think, you know, we need to bring, bring to the conversation, it's part of our job, but that doesn't diminish the, the appreciation for the work that's gone into it. I think, I share a lot of views that Councilmember Asari just had, except I would say I'm maybe more of, of a mixed mind with respect to the, the prudence of, of moving forward with the project. And I guess part of that would be the idea of what the right scale is. Councilmember Rosenberg has actually done a, a really good job, like, surfacing some of the, the reasons for this in terms of changed conditions, post-pandemic, rapidly accelerating climate crisis, other pressing needs, as Mr. Dorfman just noted. And I know that money's not exactly fungible for any purpose, but I think actually, there is a wider set of things, you know, pretty significantly, that, that money could go for and displace what money might be spent otherwise on those things, and therefore have a sort of fungibility in effect. There's no denying that it really isn't actually popular with residents. It's never scored higher than 20% in our four statistically significant representative city surveys. It's the best data we have on pretty much any issue. It's the only representative data we have really on any issue. Contrast to citywide fiber, Hopewell Development, Trades District Development, all of those things consistently score three to four times higher in terms of more popular. Two-thirds of residents support them, instead of 15 or 18 or 16% of residents. I know there's a dedicated constituency that will benefit from this and really wants it done, but I, I think it's hard to not, to deny that this just isn't a popular product, project with residents. I don't know the fundamental reasons for that, maybe a lot feel like Mr. Dorfman does, maybe there are other reasons. I think what we heard at the work session a little bit is kind of this, well, we said this in 2017, so we must move forward. And I, I find that honestly puzzling in the context of other decisions that we're hitting pause on that are much more recent. I've mentioned the Showers West, potential fundamental pivot there from what the city approved via appropriations in 2023. I think we've hit pause on a number of ARPA and Creed projects that were approved in last year's budget. I don't think there's any shame in saying, hey, this tax was passed in 2017 based on what we knew at that time by a 4-3 vote, and since then, some things have fundamentally changed, and actually, we got a lot of data now about what our residents actually want that we didn't have at that time. Being responsive to data about what our residents want is not a, a reason to, to feel ashamed as an elected official. It's actually something to, I think, embrace. So all those things, to me, speak to the, the need to maybe revisit some, some baseline assumptions about scale and moving forward. I know not everybody feels that way, but I, I think it's a serious part of this conversation. I don't think it should be written off. Second, I think, there are some significant, like, hard lines for me that I know for a fact, I could not approve a, a future bond ordinance. I mentioned direct use of fossil fuels on site, lead certification in line with the city's green building ordinance, public subsidy for a hotel, public subsidy for a parking garage, expenditures or plans that exceed the food and beverage tax dollars. So if the RDC decides to give the land to the project, like, that's, that's a problem for me, because that's an opportunity cost with TIF funding. Like, I'm, I'm not okay with that, actually, as a, as a basic premise of how we fund this project. And I don't want to find, I, my interest in postponing potentially tonight is not to delay or kill the project, even though I have mixed feelings about it, but is in the interest of avoiding putting ourselves in a situation that's more difficult and fraught later, because we didn't get alignment on these things. I think fiscal sustainability here is pretty critical. The tax sunsets in 2045. I, I still want to have, dig into some of the assumptions around operations and maintenance and others going forward. Other things that are relevant to this conversation, to me, as an elected official, about community needs, is the location of a, of a justice center. I've brought this up in several meetings now. We have close to 10 acres of land across the public entities that own surrounding this space. That's plenty for a justice center. I know we've struggled to find locations. I, I honestly think that has to be a serious part of this conversation, because that, to me, is a much more fundamental need for our community, to not have a suburban jail campus, as opposed to something in the downtown. And so I don't think we can make an informed decision about site selection here without talking about the opportunity cost with issues like that. You know, in summary, I, I think, again, I think the stage gate process of project management makes sense to me here, and I don't think the council has been, like, built into a stage gating process in the way we should, as the fiscal body that will ultimately approve appropriations or not to, you know, fund the whole thing. So I think, not that this can't be accomplished after this vote, but I think it'll be harder to do, and so for that reason, I, I wonder about a postponing until, like, a regular session a month from now, like, May 15th, so that we might actually be able to get commitments in writing from the CIB, for instance, on a variety of these factors, and actually achieve alignment or consensus on some, some key elements. I don't think that will be necessarily easy to do, but I, I think, I would rather try to do that. And I think Councilmember Rosenberg's suggestion for a work session between the Fabtac request and this meeting was a step in that direction, but it was not enough. You know, we need, actually need more, not less. So I, I guess I'm speaking my mind in general about the project at length, I appreciate you tolerating that. But additionally, I think I would favor postponement to, to May 5th, and, sorry, May 15th, and we'd be happy to make that motion, but invite others to weigh in as well.
Councilmember Rallo?
This is an interesting discussion. So I'm, I'm concerned about, first of all, is there any hazard in postponing, number one? Number two, is there, and Mr. Underwood has something to say about that, and then specifically, would this require renegotiation of the interlocal cooperation agreement in order to specify things that the CIB would be required to come to council in order to, to vet? Or could it be described in a way that it was, I don't know, some memorandum of understanding between the CIB and the, I mean, we, we have different parties involved here, they have the county as well, can't just do things unilaterally. So I guess I want to hear from Mr. Lucas on that second point, but Mr. Underwood, would you address the, the hazard, if there is one, in postponing?
Can we, we're at the period of council comment. If we have a motion on the table to postpone, I think that would be the appropriate time to ask those questions. We don't have a motion on the table at this point.
I'm not sure I'll support it.
Well, we, we're not going to, we need a motion on the table, then you could ask those questions about the impact of that motion before we vote on that motion.
Chair's discretion.
So, does somebody want to put a motion on the table about postponement?
I'll do it. I move that we postpone this vote until May 15th, so the council has time to add some parameters and requests to the memo for fund allocation.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion on the table.
Do I start if I made it, or?
Pardon me?
Do I start talking if I made it, or, you know?
Well, I was going to, so that Councilmember Rallo doesn't have to repeat his question, I was going to come back to his question that is now appropriate, since we have a motion to postpone. So I think he was asking Mr. Underwood about the impact of postponing? Is that right? Mr. Underwood? Or there was another part of the question about a new interlocal agreement that perhaps Mr. Lucas could address?
Yes, the first, the first-
Yes, the first the first question is about, you know, what what the cost is of postponing, if any, number one, which I think is appropriate for Mr. Whiteheart or Mr. Uh, Underwood. And the second one was, um, what what would we do in a month? What would that look like? What could we accomplish the council, or would it require other input from other from the county, et cetera?
Mr. Whiteheart?
Um, a a postponement for a month has a couple of effects. Uh, one is we are um sitting on on unpaid bills right now. So we have individuals who have been uh contributing their professional services uh since October who have not been paid. Uh, so a month down the road is another month where they go unpaid uh for their services. Secondly, a postponement of this also means we we have Schmidt right now, who is working on a rescoping project for us to report to us in May, um, because they because they're making the assumption they will also be paid for their work. And if we are kicking this down the road past our May meeting, uh, I'm not sure that we have a Zoom conversation with Schmidt tomorrow. I'm not sure in good faith I can ask them to complete that rescoping if I can assure them that they can be paid for their work. Thirdly, um, every month we delay this project, and this will delay the project moving forward, uh, is estimated to cost us an additional $160,000 on the project. So every month of delay has a cost involved to it. Uh, so if we we're simply asking right now for approval um of a resolution you approved unanimously a couple of weeks ago, so that we can have access to $250,000 right now to pay our bills. If somewhere down the road, uh, there is further discussion about amending the interlocal agreement, um, we are your child. I don't have a dog in the fight. So if you want to work with the county on amending the interlocal agreement to provide different direction to us, that's certainly up to our four parents to figure that out. The bonding issue is even further down the road, but we will be dead in the water right now if we simply can't have you approve what you unanimously approved a couple of weeks ago so that we can pay our current bills and move forward. You can stop us at any point in this process because we will be coming back to you again in the future, asking you for an additional appropriation. And if at that point you have further or greater concerns and want to stop us at that point, you certainly can. But uh, I I strongly encourage you not to stop us now and to simply reaffirm what you've already voted to do.
Council member Asari?
I I think I might echo some of those thoughts that, um, I mean, I I think given the reputational cost, the actual cost, et cetera, um, I think we have another tool available to us and which we could, you know, have as soon as next meeting, right, which is?
Point of order, we're on questions right now about?
Are we questions? I thought we were commenting the motion. Are we not debating?
We're we're in questions about the new motion to postpone.
Is that?
Aren't we?
No, I thought we were. We're the, there's a motion on the table and and and
I would take questions or comments on the motion.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, I I just think I think that I think that we have other tools on the table, like, we can pass a resolution that simply says, hey, these are, these are things that we all want to make sure are included. I think they've already made it very clear that, you know, they they would, it would be very foolish. I mean, it would be at least strange for them to bring uh the next, you know, design with a with a parking garage, as an example, right? I mean, so, um, but but I do think that we have to go through the process of having those conversations, again, hopefully in a more sort of less Roberts Rules type of conversation. Um, but um, but I I think the argument's been made very clearly. I don't think we need to delay the process for us to do that. I think that, um, I think we've made it very clear that we have things that we want to make sure are part of this design process, and I think we have other tools to to make that um to make that point for.
Madam President, I had a second part of the question directed to Mr. Lucas, but wasn't wasn't asked.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Or wasn't addressed.
We'll get back to that. Um, and that was, uh, would a new look interlocal agreement be required? Is that a question?
Okay, and let me rephrase it since we've gotten some more information here. Mr. Lucas, is there anything preventing, precluding the council from negotiating or developing a memo of understanding or some other means by which we express what was articulated by my colleague um a few minutes ago? Um, or is voting this down the only means by which we can address it?
I I don't think it's the only means. I'll I'll point out that the interlocal agreement that was just recently approved a little over a month ago, uh, mentions that the parties, the the city and the county have agreed that the work previously conducted regarding the location, the scope, and the design of the convention center expansion retains relevance. Uh, they expect the CIB to incorporate that work, update it as appropriate with additional data and input from city and county leadership and the public into the CIB's selection of a site for the expanded convention center, uh, sites for related amenities, uh, corresponding designs for the same and partner selection. So the the interlocal agreement uh contemplates, I I think, um, additional data and input from either the city or the county. Uh, whether this is the uh critical moment to provide that input, uh, I think that's up to you all. Uh, I I would mention that another point in this uh process will will involve council approval of bonds. Um, I know that's been discussed, but um, uh, certainly, uh, approval of bonding would be another chance for this council to uh take a look at the designs and then approve or not approve uh funding. Uh, I would certainly say, uh, you know, if if this is approved tonight, before uh bonding comes forward, the council may uh want to think about how it would like to make its uh preferences known. I, the question was asked, must we update the interlocal agreement? Uh, I I think it depends on what you all have in mind. Uh, you know, if you're if you're going to start adding uh stipulations that that the convention center will include certain things, it it just depends on what those are.
Uh, council member Flaherty?
I actually just wanted to clarify why it is that we have, like, six months of of unpaid bills. In my in my understanding, I don't think that's the way that we typically would spend money, uh, right? You have the money appropriated to cover the expenses before contracting. Like, is there a particular reason why we've been doing, because it puts, obviously, it puts us in a, in a, I mean, you just shared that there's sort of a certain level of pressure around these paying these bills, but we're trying to have a separate conversation about policy and the the future direction of the project, um, which is undermine, you know, and it's undermining it, I guess.
We we have been meeting um since October of 2023. Uh, the members of the um Capital Improvement Board have included um two appointments by the county commissioners, two by the mayor, one by the city council, one by the county council, and then we selected a seventh member. So we've been meeting since October. Uh, in fact, because you made an appointment uh to our board so that we could meet and begin the work of the county ordinance. Uh, so uh, part of that work for us to move forward was uh retaining uh legal counsel and a controller. And in fact, those were the recommendations that were made to us by both the then Corporation counsel Beth Kate and county attorney Jeff Cockrell at our October meeting, that we needed to do that um as as quickly as possible, which which we did. And in each one of our agreements moving forward retaining both legal counsel and a controller, we stipulated in our agreements with them that that their work was pending funding by the city council. So they knew when they entered into the agreement that uh that the ability for them to be paid for their work depended on where we are tonight, on your approval uh for us to do that. Uh, Mr. Whitlash made the comment that he believed in the project, and if it turned out that he was going to be unpaid for his work, so be it. Uh, but, uh, you know, a- again, we've been meeting since October because you authorized us to meet since October. Am I making an appointment to our board, and then we met?
Mr. Whiteheart?
Yes?
So your request for approval of the budget didn't come to us until March. Why such a long period between? I I imagine that you were waiting for January 1st because we had it in our 2024 budget.
Well, you didn't, you didn't, I'm sorry, you didn't approve the interlocal agreement until the end of February. So at the end of February, the interlocal agreement was approved, and at that point, we came forward because at that point, we had the agreement, and at that point, we came forward with our budget.
I see. Of course, this body approved an interlocal agreement in November, but okay.
Pardon me?
This body approved an interlocal agreement in November, but yes, I I understand. Any other uh questions or comments on the motion that's on the table? Council member Rosenberg?
Thank you. Um, earlier, council member Flaherty asked if the CIB would be back in front of council before a design was made, and you said no, that you you CIB does not need to be back here. There would be nothing for us to approve. Uh, but then talking about this delay, you sort of said, um, of course, you're going to be back. I guess I just think you're kind of just telling folks up here what they want to hear in that way. Like, you don't have to come back. And I guess, like, being on my second term of council, I think a lot gets said to try to convince council members to 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 do with, to do what someone wants, right? And channeling former council member Ron Smith on this one, I just think we have a fiduciary duty um to to be better in specifying how we're spending this money right now. I mean, I um, I do just think this isn't ready, and I I even feel like the way it was presented in, you know, a memo with a few paragraphs is like, to me, not enough accounting of how this money is going to be spent and just that we don't know about design. We don't know how county and city land is going to be used, right? And I I think there are really big opportunity costs with the land even. So like, just the idea, I mean, the idea that we don't have a market analysis for a $50 million project when our world is different from four years ago is really hard for me. Like, I don't feel like I can go back to my constituents and say, like, this is full steam ahead with what I consider to be uh no data that even says, like, what kind of expansion should happen now and like what that should look like. And um, I would really, I would really appreciate a delay in this. I think, I mean, I I understand that government can act slowly. Uh, this is $50 million. I also think when we say $50 million, it's incredibly hard for people to wrap their minds around. Like, that is a lot of money, and we are already in a lot of debt. And um, I mean, if we're talking about economic development too, it's just like, there are other ways to get at that, right? And I I just think, you know, this is, like Mr. Dorfman said, this is bigger than just, like, do we want to allocate this money? It is what should this project look like in 2024, knowing everything we know, right, about our community survey and post-pandemic? And I just think, I also think the idea that, oh, we can change things as we go. Well, so far, this council, I think what has been said more than anything is, like, well, we're already going down that path. So like, I don't necessarily feel confident, I mean, in my fellow council members, in changing course, though, if it's needed. So like, I, I mean, I'm just being honest that I know it's a hard thing to do, I think. And um, so like, I think we do need to take this seriously and look at it. And just like, I I just don't feel like it is ready tonight. And it is a resolution, so it was brought to us today. And, right? Like, this is our first time talking about it, and and we are allowed to say we're not ready yet. Thanks.
Council member Daly?
I I I don't necessarily disagree with the idea of taking a look at some of these those other issues and, you know, having a deeper conversation. I think the issue at heart right now is just paying our bills, and we need to not be um deadbeat on our bills, and we just need to get those paid and then have the conversation about how we want to move forward. And that's my brief thought on it.
Council member Stasburg?
Hi, thank you. Um, I hear people saying that that we want a few different things out of this project, and one of the things we want is a market analysis, that we want a little bit more study, that we want a little bit more information. But I kind of think it's problematic for us to say, hey, we want this information, but we're not willing to to give you guys a budget. And I do sort of feel like as part of that um, that process that started last October, I mean, the in 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 theory, it's like, well, we had a baby. To go with that analogy that we've been going for, right? When you have a baby, you have to budget for the baby. Okay? And 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 we had a baby in October, and we didn't give the baby any money to do anything, but we asked the baby to do all this stuff. Okay? It's, I'm sorry, it's a little bit late now. So the baby analogy is just is just the best that I can do. So I find it really problematic right now that at this point we're saying, okay, baby, like, you've you've been, like, surviving on air for the past six months, and we expect you to survive on air for another month. Um, I I do think that it's problematic that this budget is so bare bones. I would like to see a little bit more detail about how that is spent. Um, in terms of, you know, it's $130,000, uh, I believe, for for internal salaries. I'm kind of interested in how that breaks down between a controller and and uh a legal counsel. And and part of that is just curious, right? That that's kind of a curiosity question for me. It's like, how how is this really being spent? And I think that that's some of the details that some people um mentioned. Uh, and I I would like those details in the future. Um, so I hope the CIB is kind of hearing that, that, like, give us a few more details in the future. Um, I think you're also hearing that that we want a market analysis, and I heard three different quotes on a market analysis ranging from uh $30-ish thousand up to $126,000, and did not hear uh which one of those three numbers would be maybe the most appropriate market analysis right now. And I'm kind of curious about that, um, because at a $32,000 market analysis, that might be able to fit into this budget that has already um is already in front of us tonight. But I'm not sure if it can fit in there or not because, I mean, there's also apparently unpaid bills, but we don't know how much those unpaid bills are for. And so I find that also just kind of like this missing gap of information. So I'm going to echo what some people said about, you know, missing gaps of information, and I dislike uh that that those things are missing, and I feel like that that those need to be presented to us in the future. Um, I also can't, however, support postponing this for a month. I could potentially see postponing it for a week to maybe get some of those um questions answered and to start working on, for example, maybe us, uh, my understanding right now is a second interlocal agreement that specifically talks about building requirements and some of those design things uh around lead certification, et cetera, et cetera, that some folks talked about. Um, but I really feel like we we cannot ask the CIB to do more and continue to not fund them. So I will vote no on the motion in front of us to delay for a month, but um if there was a motion to delay for, say, a week, I would probably vote yes on that. And if we have to vote tonight on the budget, I'm going to vote yes, because I do feel like we need to fund the baby. Thank you.
Okay, other council member comments? Council member Zulik?
So I would be against postponing with the caveat of, as council member Asari said, we do pass a resolution. Um, but I'll take it one step further. I would like to pass a resolution saying that the council will not pass the design without a written commitment uh from the CIB. Um, that follows, you know, such and such criteria. And I would also propose that we have a council work session sometime next week to outline what that specific criteria is going to be, whether it be lead certification, no parking lot. Um, just, that was not my personal views, just throwing out some stuff I've heard. Um, and I think that it would be the best way that we can ensure that people are getting paid while simultaneously also ensuring that as a city, we're living our values and that um as we embark on a $50 million project, we're making sure that, you know, we are also acknowledging our climate action plan and making sure that um we, you know, we are who we say we are and that we're not just continuing on this path because it's the path that we were put on. Obviously, I wasn't here in 2023 to pass some of those ordinances, and so it's kind of hard to say, like, well, we were the ones who did it. Well, some of us weren't. Um, but yeah, I'm not not a huge fan of being put in the position where it's like, we vote on this or people don't get paid. But I digress, and I would be um against postponing only if we were to instead plan a council work session next week. Thank you.
Council member Rallo?
Thanks. Um, I really feel like I would be operating in bad faith if I were to vote this down um tonight or or vote for a postponement. I think that uh with our previous approvals of operation for the CIB. And furthermore, I think it doesn't preclude us from discussing, and it seems we have the the latitude to develop these specifics about placement, the design, lead certification, you know, proposing and budgeting a market analysis, the scale of the project, all of these things. Now, we can, we can still do that. We don't have to hold up this budget, which is rather modest right now. And so I would be voting against the, the motion. Thanks.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I, I kind of share the sentiment of Councilmembers Asari, Rallo, Zulik, others, that I agree there's mechanisms we can use going forward, even following a, a potential vote tonight. And I think in previous years, I would have supported that approach. I think what's leading me to vote in favor of this motion tonight is experience of a few things. One is that I'm actually really troubled by the fact that we've got, been accruing bills without money appropriated for it or approved. I know it needed an additional step besides the annual budget process, but I just don't think we should be operating that way. And it's like a problem that wasn't our creation, I guess, and seems to me like poor fiscal management, that really is creating a sense of urgency now to, to just vote on this, to pay our bills, when like, that's not how we should be making decisions. We should, from time to time, we are, things come to us with this extreme sense of urgency, and it's, it's a real problem, actually. The second piece is that multiple times now in my four and a half years of service, several under the previous administration, already under this administration, there are efforts to depart from what was presented to the council after appropriations are made. You know, it's kind of a fool me three or four times at this point, so I guess I can blame myself. But like, that's a trend I've observed again across this administration, across the previous administration. I'm not necessarily the C, saying the CIB will be the same, but because I've been burned a number of times of departures from appropriations, departures from what was presented to us without ever seeking our approval again or even our input, I have a lot of reservations about not having the details clarified in writing before making a vote on appropriations. There are ways that I'll be looking to amend future appropriation ordinances, to narrow scope. I'll be looking at the power of the council to decrease appropriations in various contexts. But I'm just sharing that, that like, that informs my votes tonight. These, these negative experiences across two administrations with not following through on what was presented to the council is deeply problematic and, and just informs my perspective here. So, thank you.
All right. Well, I will just say this process is messed up, to put it eloquently. It is a bad process. I mean, that, so, we created a CIB. We didn't give them any, appropriate, any money in 2023. Also, we weren't asked to do so. Then, we approved an interlocal agreement in November of 2023, which was then changed by the county commissioners and delayed until February of 2024. In the meantime, the CIB is having people do work and not paying them. And now we're at 10:05. We still have four ordinances left to discuss tonight, and we're being told, you know, we have to make do on our promises and urgently, and we can't take more time. And on the other hand, we, you know, as was stated two weeks ago, we did ask the Fabtac to make a recommendation on this same budget, so we could have also had this conversation then. So a lot of things have gone wrong. The process is broken, and I do feel like, why should we be the ones to give up our control over this, just because this is a messed up process due to various other factors outside our control? That said, I do think there are other mechanisms to ensure that we have more control as this project moves forward. Everything that Councilmember Flaherty said about the project and how he wouldn't approve bonding if certain conditions weren't met are things that I agree with. And so I think we do need to either pass a resolution or come to some understanding that says, hey, we are not going to approve bonding or more money unless those things, those conditions are met. And I, I do think we have other tools to do that, so, you know, I don't want Whitlatch to do it for free, so. I think I will probably vote against the, the postponement for a whole month. So can we call the question on the motion to postpone for a month?
Can I take a second bite?
Well, Councilmember Rallo, I suppose you can at 10:06 with four ordinances to go? Go ahead.
What I wanted to say is I agree with you. But I doubt that this council is going to come up with those conditions and the specifics, the nine-headed beast that it is, in a month. So I, I'm, I'm very cognizant of what you said and what my colleague said, but I think that this is a bad time to hold it up, and I think that we can proceed without that constraint as well. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, I am fine withdrawing my motion if that's allowed.
It is allowed.
I'll do that, just so we don't take that time. And...
Is the, the person who seconded okay with that? Councilmember Flaherty?
On the table, we actually need unanimous consent to withdraw, but if we have that...
Is there any objection to withdrawing of the motion? No? Okay.
Oh, sorry. I, can I just make a comment on top of that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I singled out Councilmember Rallo for my disdain at taking more time.
I know. Well...
Obviously, we're all at fault.
I mean, I do just want to clear, I do just want to clear up, too, that this allocation of funding is not just to pay bills. It is to have an entire convention center expansion designed. So, I mean, we did focus on that a lot, but that's just, that's not what's happening. It's, it's a lot bigger than that. And I'm happy to do a resolution supporting any, any items that we want to see or not see in a convention center expansion. I just, you know, resolutions have no teeth. We tend to not enforce them in any way. They're not binding, same with a memo. So if there are other mechanisms that could be binding, I'd be very interested in that. Oh, I will also just say I'm voting no on this, because when a process does come to me flawed, I am voting no on it. I've said that at multiple meetings now, but I'm going to stick to it.
Thank you. All right. Well, so now we have before us the actual resolution, 2024-10. Are we ready to have a vote? Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
That passes by a vote of six to two. We now will move on to, and we, we thank the individuals for their patience with this resolution, and that we now move on to our ordinances.
I move that ordinance 2024-03 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor of introducing this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Clerk Bolden, will you please read?
Yes. Ordinance 2024-03, to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding technical corrections set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains corrections or clarifications in the UDO, including reference corrections, removal of unnecessary wording, correcting for duties of the engineering department, and sinking references across the UDO. There are 46 amendments identified, some appearing multiple times in the code.
I move that ordinance 2024-03 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Jackie Scanlon to present this evening. Thank you for your patience.
Yes, no problem. All right. So this is the first of our four ordinances. Every year, planning, I'm sorry, Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager, Plan and Transportation Department. Every year, we bring forward a number of ordinances to our title, Title 20, which is the Unified Development Ordinance, with amendments. So all year, staff tracks things that maybe weren't working quite right or things that we think could be better, and then we bring those forward to you for an update. So just for those who aren't super familiar, the last update we did became effective in August of last year. And so typically, what we do is the first one is a technical corrections ordinance. So that's what this one is. As Clerk Bolden said, there are 46 amendments. I think there might actually be 47, and some appear more than once. Usually, I go through them all. It's so late. So, especially not on the technical amendments. If you guys want to call ones out that you want to talk about on this or the others, that's fine. But I will just briefly go over the technical amendments we really do keep to try to make them just be technical, so correcting references, correcting spelling. We took out a number of the optional provisions that were put in when we did the state FEMA Code, the state floodplain code update last year. And we fixed, as Clerk Bolden said, a number of references to the city engineer or the city engineering department. And, yeah, that's generally what the updates are for this code. So, I'm sorry, for, on this ordinance. So the Plan Commission heard this as case number 00424 at their March 11th meeting and voted to send the petition to common council with a positive recommendation with a vote of seven to zero, so I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. Are there any questions on ordinance 2024-03? Seeing none, we will go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this ordinance? If you're on Zoom and you'd like to comment, please use the raise hand function. Mr. Lucas, is there anybody on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
All right. We'll come back to councilmembers for any comments on ordinance 2024-03. Seeing none, we will go to a vote. Council, uh, city clerk, Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes with a vote of eight to zero. We move on to the next ordinance about the UDO.
I move that ordinance 2024-04 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Do I have a second? Thank you.
Thank you. All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 20, oh God, ordinance 2024-04, to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20, Table of Contents, and 2004. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments to the Table of Contents in Chapter Four related to development standards. There are 55 amendments identified.
I move that ordinance 2024-04 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Scanlon?
Great, thank you. This ordinance was seen by the Plan Commission as Z zero, I'm so sorry, 00524, also at their March 11th meeting, and was amended, a couple of clarifications, one correction, one clarification, and recommended approval with a vote of seven to zero. So this ordinance actually is related to items in Chapter Four of the Unified Development Ordinance. So those items are related to development standards and incentives. So you can see in your packet a synopsis of what those items are. I will briefly go over those. So development standards and incentives section are the development standards that we use for development in town. So, again, this year, or I haven't said this yet, I guess, but we tried not to make any kind of large policy-type changes because of the new administration, new director, and trying to keep this one pretty simple. So we did some updating for some of our environmental regulation language to reference current preferred practice over some other sort of specific language that had been used that the environmental, senior environmental planner preferred be changed. We also updated some language related to wetlands resources, again, to just be called wetlands. And one environmental change that we made of interest is changing how we talk about tree protection and creating something called the Tree Protection Zone and clarifying how that is to be put in during construction to protect existing trees, both single and tree stands. And then, yeah, there were just a number of other changes, some changes clarifying how bike parking in the right-of-way can be counted in situations where, for example, downtown bike parking for a commercial property can't be put on site because the building is entirely covered by, or the property is entirely covered by the building. So we've run into that a couple of times, having issues with that. So clarifying that in those situations, public bike parking within a 50 feet can be counted. And, yeah, I think, I'm happy, there is obviously a large list in the packet, which normally we would laboriously read through, but I think that pretty much covers it. Additionally, I wanted to clarify, we put in some clarifying language related to electronic reader boards and how those are regulated. We've had some questions about whether or not those count as internally illuminated signs, so clarifying that language. And finally, taking out some of our more specific noise control language that has been in Title 20, because noises, noise control is regulated separately in Title 14, and so legal suggested that we removed some of our more detailed language. And that's all I have. I don't know, I can't remember if I talk about the potential amendments. Do you remember? Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. I will move Amendment One to ordinance 2024-04, which is an amendment to correct some typographical errors in the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. This is, this was in a packet addendum that was issued around 6:30 this evening. Pardon us for the last-minute nature of this, just to correct a few typos. So it's nothing substantive in this amendment. Are there any questions? Councilmember Stossberg?
I just want to point out that on this amendment and then in this packet, it's kind of hard to explain, but in the packet, on page 129, you can see that there is an extra red line that was, grammar that was adjusted during the Plan Commission meeting, and that extra red line was not representative or is not representative in the table of changes that appears at the end of this section in our packet. And so that means that on the amendment, that extra red line does not appear on the amendment, but I have been assured by Mr. Lucas that because of the phrasing of the amendment, it is actually included in the amendment, even though, because it's, because it's redlined in on Attachment A, and that the table is not Attachment A, but just in case anybody is noticing that discrepancy between the redlining in the document and the table and Amendment One. Does that make sense to people? It's kind of late. Sorry.
It does. Thank you. Any other questions about Amendment One? All right. Anybody in the public care to comment on Amendment One, correcting typos? Seeing none? Any comments on Amendment One? No. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on Amendment One? Oh, Councilmember Stossberg?
Could we do a voice vote on this? Is that okay?
I do not know.
No, I would recommend a, a roll call vote on Amendment Seven of legislation.
Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on Amendment One to ordinance 2024-04?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty is out of the room. Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Amendment is adopted seven to zero?
We also have a second amendment, so I would like to move Amendment Two to ordinance 2024-04.
Second.
Thank you. This amendment is at the request of staff to just change some language around mulch and... and not describe mulch as decorative, and instead describe stone as decorative and eliminate gravel as an acceptable use in landscape beds.
Thank you, Councilmember Stossberg. Are there any questions on this amendment? Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on Amendment 2 to ordinance 2024-04? And again, if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. Not seeing anybody? Any final comments? Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on Amendment 2?
Yes, Councilmember Stossberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger is out of the room. Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
It passes by a vote of eight to zero?
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero, sorry. The previous one was also seven to zero. All right, so we will go back to the, well, I want to ask some questions before I decide whether or not to introduce Amendment 3. So Ms. Scanlon, in the section on storage of vehicles or equipment, there is a list of, let's see, of reasons that all outdoor parking of vehicles in all zoning districts shall comply with the following standards. And number three in the standards is stored or parked vehicles shall not be used for other purposes, including but not limited to living quarters or the storage of materials. And when I read this, I was concerned about not being allowed to be used as living quarters because I know that some people who are unhoused do use cars to get some degree of safety and cover for, to sleep in overnight. So could you please speak to that concern?
Sure, thank you. So this particular code reference already exists in the UDO in Chapter 2. It's in the use of specific standards for a use called outdoor storage that is listed under our employment uses. But the intro to that section applies it to all zoning districts. So it's kind of in a confusing location, so that's why we're moving it out, and that's why we're proposing to put it in Chapter 4. So that's kind of the reason why you're seeing this. We're not actually changing any of the language. So I understand Councilperson Piedmont Smith's concerns. I do think we wanted to explain to you a little bit how we've used this provision in the past. So it does apply to vehicles, both technically on private and public property, but we have only ever applied it, for example, if someone is storing an RV on their property and having someone live in it, and we receive a complaint from a neighbor, you know, that it seems like there's a second dwelling unit on the property in a vehicle. And so then we use this provision when we send a notice of violation saying, you know, hey, you're not allowed to have someone using a vehicle as a dwelling unit or as living quarters. We have also used it in notices of violation related to Airbnbs, Airbnbs where people list trailers in their yard as a place where you can stay on an Airbnb. The reason we, you know, why it's included, I think, initially, generally, is for kind of, like a backstop for like a health and safety issue of having someone on a property near you or on your property who is living in a vehicle. That's not ideal. We do understand, obviously, of course, that we are in a housing crisis here in Bloomington. As long as I've been in this particular position since 2018, we've never applied it in a situation, you know, where we've received a complaint of someone living in a car or living, you know, living in a vehicle on a street or anything of that nature. It strictly has been used for like larger recreational vehicles that are being used basically as houses. So you can imagine, you know, we have regulations for accessory structures and how accessory dwelling units can be done, and so using those kind of recreational vehicles in that way is kind of skirting all of those regulations. So all of the types of inspections that are required for buildings and residences and things aren't done when you are just letting someone live in an RV on your property. So we would, we do think it's useful. We understand the concern about having it be in code and having that maybe be something that could be used in a way that would make, you know, would maybe be uncomfortable because of our housing crisis and people living in vehicles. That wasn't the kind of prerogative of the last administration. We haven't seen any change toward that with this administration. We use it very sparingly and not for those types of issues. So we would prefer, my stance would be to leave it in. If there's discussion, to take it out because of those extreme cases where we maybe need to say to someone, you know, you can't have your cousin or son-in-law or whatever living on your property in a vehicle long-term. That's not a long-term solution. And I will say, when we have reached out to people in the past for this type of violation, it isn't very often, and we have worked with property owners before where they say, for example, that the person is planning to move out next week. Like, that's fine, you know, this body probably knows. When we do enforcement, we are just trying, our goal is to get to compliance, and so we wouldn't, you know, we would work with someone if there was a situation where something like that was going on. But yeah, our preference would be to leave it in for those extreme cases, but we understand the concern that, that it could be used in a broad kind of sweeping way that would maybe be counter to, you know, us trying to help the unhoused and people in that situation. Does that answer, is that enough of a response, Ms. Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I just have a follow-up. So in what you call extreme cases, you know, when there's disruption to the neighborhood or violence or unsafe living conditions, are there not other methods by which the city could remedy the situation?
Sure, I think that there are others, both in Title 20 and in other titles, as we discussed earlier. For example, we, we have one where there was some kind of domestic disturbance situation occurring in one of these vehicles, and yes, the police can be called in that situation, of course, as well. And we do have requirements about structures and how they're used, and, for example, the definition of dwelling unit. But those things become, for us in Title 20, are, this is very clear, where it just says you cannot use vehicles as living quarters, where we, if we're trying to make the argument that someone's RV or something is being, being used as a de facto dwelling unit, then we have to establish certain facts about that vehicle, that it's being used in the way a structure would be used, that it has a kitchen, that it has an address, and like those things become more complicated, and some may be harder for us to do enforcement using those other routes that we have related to the Title 20 issues, where this is pretty explicit.
But the way the code is written, it could be used to prevent somebody from sleeping in their vehicle in somebody's driveway or in the parking lot at Target.
I think we would have to, as we do sometimes for terms that aren't defined, so for living quarters, we would really have to, if we got a complaint, for example, of someone sleeping in a car in a driveway, we would really have to internally discuss and with the legal department, what does living quarters mean? You know, if you're spending the night in your car and then you're gone during the day or you're driving it around and then you're sleeping in, you know, in the seat, is that really your living quarters? Or do you just not have living quarters and you're staying in your car? I don't, the code is, it's not a defined term, and I don't think code is explicit, and so we would have to, you know, as we do with some, some terms in the code, try to determine, you know, do we think that the use of that vehicle has gone over the threshold of someone's clearly living here and using it as a, as a house, as a dwelling unit?
Councilmember Stossberg?
I just want to kind of follow up on that and maybe add a clarification. So what I just heard you say is that, first, this section is a section that already exists in the UDO, it just exists somewhere else.
Correct.
And second, that it is not currently being used as an enforcement mechanism regarding somebody who is unhoused and like, hopefully temporarily, living in their vehicle.
Correct.
Right? And that you just said that as staff, you have to define living quarters, but living quarters is not otherwise defined in the UDO.
Correct.
So maybe instead of this amendment, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, would it be better to think to the future of defining what living quarters were as a definition, to then make sure that somebody who is unhoused doesn't end up caught in this web?
At this point, there is no motion on the table, so questions should be directed to Ms. Scanlon.
Okay, so would it be helpful, then, to maybe define living quarters in the UDO in the future so that then it is understandable what is?
Sure, that could be helpful. I mean, it's hard for us because, obviously, ideally, living in your vehicle is not, that's not ideal. And so plan, you know, figuring out a way to let that happen, like, obviously, we as a community are working on much bigger things to address that issue. And one of our concerns is because we do enforcement as well, we see, you know, there are bad actors in town who take advantage of kind of like loopholes and things, and so I know that, while I understand what you're saying, I am hesitant to say like, yes, let's do that to fix the problem, because my concern is opening this door to then someone, you know, renting out vehicles, to people make, you know, taking money from people to sleep in vehicles on their property, people who, you know, taking advantage of other people. So for us, from an enforcement standpoint, I think that might be difficult, but it's definitely something we are open to looking at, you know, when Ms. Piedmont Smith raised this issue. I do think it is something that we, we should think about because while we have not used it in that way, I understand the concern that, just based on the bare language, you know, there's a concern that it could be used in that manner.
Are there other questions for Ms. Scanlon?
It's such a basic question, and I'm sorry, page 136, 7A.
Councilmember Assari?
Sorry, oh, sorry, sorry. Since that time, sorry. Yeah, so page 136, I believe, it was 7A. I just don't understand what that says in English.
Okay, great.
And the commas are also strange to me.
That's okay. So except for like single-family houses or plexes, or otherwise stated in the reference, in the section referenced, all parking areas have to be like hard, like concrete or asphalt or pavers. So this is because in single-family or duplex, so it's like the converse, is that in single-family and duplex, you can use gravel as long as it's edged, but that's the only, those are the only locations for parking in the city that are allowed to use gravel.
Okay.
Obviously, we have tons of lawful, non-forming gravel places, but newly developed.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Assari, the Amendment 1 that was passed did put in some semi-colons to try to help this paragraph along. I'm so sorry.
That's terrible.
Are there any? Well, it's hard to see them. They're small. Are there any other questions for Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, so I'm looking at page 129, well, actually, 87 of the packet, 129 of the, of the UDO that describes siltation and erosion prevention. I think it's 87 in the packet. Yes. So tell me why we need to loosen the condition of the applicability of erosion control from 1,000 to 2,500 square feet?
Sure, great question. So as it said in the packet, it is to align, the idea was to align that minimum with what you all changed the grading permit minimum to last year, the year before, to 2,500. This is all going to be maybe moot next month when they bring Title 13 forward to you. So Title 13 will come from City Bloomington Utilities, and they will take over all erosion control for everything. So this will be, we would suggest probably something for you all to think about, because I do believe that they're carrying forward the 2,500, but, so that may be something to think about for them. For us, we were trying to align it so that it was clear for members of the public when they were responsible for doing certain things. But there is also a catch-all, I'm sorry, I don't have it pulled up, that we can do erosion enforcement on any property of any size as well. We can enforce current preferred practices if there's development happening on the property, if they have something going on there. But this will all come out after May. So all of that will be in Title 13, and Planning and Transportation will not have erosion control responsibility any longer.
Okay, and, but just then, it's basic, from my basic understanding, we changed it from 1,000 to 2,500?
Yes.
Because?
We changed it from 1,000 to 2,500 because we were capturing so many small projects that weren't really erosion control, didn't really have erosion control issues, and it was taking so much time and slowing them down that we kind of came to 2,500 as a reasonable, you know, where the impacts of what they were doing were going to be high enough that we needed to make sure we could still see those.
I see, so you're, the enforcement, your staff were, were not witnessing erosion leaving the site, et cetera?
Right, so for the smaller sites, we were doing the full review, but they weren't having the same impacts.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions on this ordinance? Okay, let's go to the public. Are there any public comments on ordinance 2024-04 as amended? Okay, seeing none. We'll come back to council members for comments. Are there any comments on ordinance 2024-04 as amended? And I will just say, I decided not to move Amendment 3. I still think this is an issue that I, I'm very concerned that somebody could be cited for sleeping in their car when they have no other place to sleep, but I think it can be addressed at a later time. I know that there are some council members who had UDO amendments that they discussed with Ms. Scanlon to bring forward later this year, and so that could be a time to perhaps better define living quarters or have some other mechanism to distinguish between somebody living in an RV as an Airbnb versus somebody living in a Chevy who doesn't have a roof over their head. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I think, I was just going to agree with what you're saying about sleeping in cars, and I think something that we could look at in the future is safe, safe places to sleep in your car, which might be helpful in like solving a problem, Airbnb versus necessity. Thanks.
Any other comments on the ordinance? Councilmember Rallo?
Just that I agree, thanks for bringing it to our attention. I think that I wouldn't, you know, want to place people in jeopardy, and I hope that we can address this, because if you have nowhere else to be, a car is shelter for you. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Assari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Stossberg?
Yes.
And that passes with a vote of eight to zero?
Before I make the next motion, okay, great. I move that ordinance 2024-05 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
And let's have a roll call vote on that because it is after 10:30?
Oh, that would be me.
A roll call vote on introduction of the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
And Assari?
Yes.
All right, will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2024-05, to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.02, 20.03, 20.05, and 20... 20.03, 20.05, and 20.07. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in chapters two, three, five, and seven related to requirements in the UDO. There are 23 amendments identified.
I move that ordinance 2024-05 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Scanlon?
Thank you. This petition was heard by the Plan Commission as ZO0624, also at its March 11 hearing, and was sent forward with a positive recommendation, seven to zero as amended, and they had, they made two corrections. Unfortunately, I neglected to get those into your packet, so you will also be voting on them tonight. They will be included in Amendment One. So this covers chapters two, three, five, and seven. The first two amendments are in chapter du, chapter two, excuse me, and then we have seven amendments from chapter three. Most of those are clarifying existing regulations. One of note is that we will be, we are proposing to allow personal services on Restaurant Row for spaces that are less than 700 square feet. So we have been in contact with some property owners who own buildings along Restaurant Row, which is largely set aside for restaurant use, that have small lease spaces. So they have a hard time finding users that can go into those small spaces. So we are proposing that personal services only be excluded from that area for spaces larger than 700 square feet. And let's see here, then we have one amendment to add a maximum floor plate to student housing or dormitory use in the mixed-use student housing zoning district. So you'll recall when we did the update of the map a number of years ago, we created the mixed-use student housing zoning district. And one of the things that we did to hopefully induce development there was not include a floor plate maximum for buildings in that area. So we have seen a lot of development or have proposals in the pipeline for that area. And so we are proposing to add a maximum building floor plate of 40,000 square feet per building, which is still quite big and would be still the largest of any of our districts. But we do think, you know, development has taken off in that area. And to be responsive to what we've heard about, you know, what we've heard many times about the size of buildings in town is to limit that maximum to 40,000 there. Then we have three amendments from chapter five, including the addition of new repair and buffer easement. We have a typical catch-all easement that we used to use for repair and buffer for our environmental standards, but now it was basically our only protected environmental standard that didn't have its own particular easement. So including language for that easement. And then a number of, I think, 11 updates to our definitions chapter, which is chapter seven. And so again, as I mentioned before, including some new tree protection language, so having that mirrored from the previous chapter. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions about ordinance 2024-05? Councilmember Rallo?
Ms. Scanlon, I'm curious. So the floor plate maximum in the student district, why not apply it everywhere?
Well, there are floor plate maximums everywhere else for, for those uses. This was the only place that didn't have them. So they're use-specific.
I see. So that, so we kept that open-ended. And what was the maximum, I mean, what was the maximum that was in a petition? Just curious.
Oh, gosh. I don't know. Eric, do you know the answer to that from one of your current ones?
Yeah, Eric Gruelich, senior zoning planner. So the maximum floor plate depends on the zoning district. So in some of the RM districts, there was a 10,000 square foot floor plate. Sometimes it was 15,000. So what we had done in the student housing district, and what Mrs. Scanlon was talking about, was in situations where somebody uses both incentives, the affordable housing and the sustainable development incentive, there was no floor plate restriction. And so what we are looking at, and this has kind of come about as part of a recent upcoming petition, where somebody was able to aggregate a substantial amount of properties and is proposing a building of two buildings, one of 50,000 and another of almost 100,000 square foot floor plate. You know, we realized that there is a limit of a, an appropriate-sized building on a property. And so having no floor plate limitation really did not allow for, or didn't give us the control that we wanted to ensure that you got smaller, appropriate-sized buildings. So we are introducing this limit to give some cap for buildings that utilize both incentives.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gruelich.
And I'll just follow up on that question. To give us a sense, what, can you point to a building that is about 40,000 square feet so we get a sense of what that size is?
Well, so the, the buildings that are being constructed over by the mall where the former Kmart, those buildings are each 20,000 square feet. So 40,000 would be two of those put together.
All right. And then I have another question related to this, maybe for Ms. Scanlon, I don't know. The, the development that Mr. Gruelich just mentioned, is that, would that be limited if we pass this tonight? Or is it already in the pipeline and would therefore not be affected by what we do tonight?
It is already vested. The way that they've designed it, and Mr. Gruelich could probably speak to this more, it's not a box. It's like where it goes in and out along the roadway so that it looks like more than one building from the pedestrian scale. The, you know, sometimes we see buildings that have, that like go back from the road but not very far back. These go quite a bit way back from the road so that they will hopefully read as separate buildings as you're like walking down them, but they are large. Did I explain that right, Eric?
Yes, that was a great way. So they have designed it with lots of modulation, lots of interior kind of courtyard designs, and it's only a five-story building. But when we, we kind of first looked at this, we realized, wow, this, this could have been really bad. You know, had it been taller, had, because utilizing both incentives then also gives you two additional floors in the student housing district. So, you know, you could be looking at a scenario where you have an eight-story building with no floor plate, and, and that would really be out of character with a lot of areas and not what we want to try to accomplish for, you know, pedestrian-scale massing and, you know, a building designed along a neighborhood. So, you know, there are possibilities. Other properties within the student housing district, where it's certainly possible to aggregate a large amount. And you could, we could be dealing with another very, very, very large building and having no cap, you know, quickly kind of raised some concerns with us.
Thank you. Other questions before we go to the amendment? All right. I will move Amendment One to ordinance 2024-05.
Second.
So this one makes a couple of the corrections that Ms. Scanlon mentioned, and then a couple of other typos that I caught. So it's not substantive, it just makes some corrections to the document that were not caught earlier. Are there any questions? Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on Amendment One to ordinance 2024-05? If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. I don't see anybody in chambers. Nobody on Zoom? Okay. Any comments on the amendment before we vote? All right, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on Amendment One?
Yes, Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. That's adopted eight to zero. Any other comment? Oh, well, any other questions on the ordinance? Okay. Now we need to go to the public for comments on the ordinance as amended. Any member of the public care to comment? Mr. Lucas, any hands on Zoom?
No, apologies, no.
I would have been very surprised had there been. Okay, back to council. Any final comments on the ordinance as amended? Seeing none, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Daley?
Yes.
That ordinance passes by a vote of eight to zero?
I move that ordinance 2024-06 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and let's do a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2024-06, to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal, Bloomington Municipal Code 20.06. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in chapter six related to processes and procedures in the UDO. There are 17 amendments identified.
I move that ordinance 2024-06 be adopted.
Second.
All right. Ms. Scanlon, once again.
Okay, great. This petition was heard by the Plan Commission again at their March hearing, and they forwarded to you with a positive recommendation with a vote of seven to zero. This petition amends, amendment proposal is for chapter six of the Unified Development Ordinance, and that is our chapter four, administration and procedures. So these cover a number of things, clarifying that application fees for petitions and permits will not be sought for nonprofit 501(c)(3)'s or units of government. That's something that has, over the years, some fees and some for petitions and some fees for some permits have applied to those different bodies. So clarifying that those fees won't apply for both. And then another one of interest is allowing subdivision waivers to be requested related to sidewalks and tree plots in the transportation plan. So in our transportation plan, we have basically design standards. So in the UDO, where you would see a design standard, for example, for sidewalk width or tree plot width, in a subdivision situation, it just references the transportation plan. So we've seen a number of small subdivisions, one or two, or, excuse me, two or three lot subdivisions where there was existing infrastructure, and there is not a relief valve for the petitioner to be able to ask to not put in transportation plan, not put in the infrastructure that meets the transportation plan. So while we want the infrastructure to go in that meets the transportation plan, that we have seen some situations where it's more appropriate to let what was there stay so that it could be, because it would be such a change from the existing, that it would be inappropriate. And so we added this in. We wanted to make it clear that someone won't be able to request a waiver of a road, of a requirement of a road being built that's in the transportation plan. So that's why we wrote it in this kind of tight way to only be related to sidewalks and tree plots. And of course, the Plan Commission may not find that the request meets the waiver requirements, just that they are allowed to ask for that. Something else that we did was kind of reorganize the section related to demolition delay. Again, we didn't change any of the information, just kind of moved some of it out of applicability where it really should probably be more in the description of what, of what they're doing, of what the different classifications mean. And then we also are changing our notice requirements. So currently, we are two property owners deep or 300 feet, whichever is less. And so we are just changing those to 300 feet. So we will be capturing all of the surrounding properties for petitions within 300 feet of the boundaries of the petition site. That's easier for administration and, you know, lets more people know typically, and other communities are going, are doing that as well. So we are changing to that. And then clarifying how some of the limited compliance requirements are, are determined is another one there. And yeah, I can answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions on ordinance 2024-06? I don't see any. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on ordinance 2024-06? Oh, Mr. Lucas? We didn't have it. Oh, we did have an amendment. I forgot. All right. Well, before we go to the public then, I will offer Amendment One to ordinance 2024-06.
Second.
Correcting typographical errors. Any questions on this? Anybody in the public would like to speak to Amendment One? Seeing none. Any council comments on Amendment One? Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll on Amendment One?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
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 Uh, yes.
Sorry, I'm having way too much fun now. Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, now we can go to the public on the ordinance as amended. Anybody care to comment from the public on ordinance 24-06 as amendment, as amended? Nobody in council chambers? Mr. Lucas? Nobody on Zoom? Okay, come back to council. Any final comments? Seeing none, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And that ordinance is adopted by a vote of eight to zero? We now move on to legislation for first reading?
I move that ordinance 2024-07 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Forgive me for that. Ordinance 2024-07, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning a 138.51-acre property from planned unit development and residential medium lot to planned unit development and to approve a district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding South Wymer Road, Sudbury Partners LLC petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2024-07 would rezone a 138.51-acre property from planned unit development and residential medium lot to a planned unit development and approve a PUD district ordinance and preliminary plan.
Thank you. And I would like to note that ordinance 2024-07 will have at least three meeting, three readings. So tonight was first reading, no discussion. We will have a second reading on April 17th, and a third reading on May 1st, possibly more than that, but I wanted to announce that in advance. Next, we will move on to the second period of general public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody who would like to offer public comment at this time? And to keep in mind that residents may speak at only one of the two opportunities for open public comment, but not both. but not both. Mr. Lucas, is there anybody raising a hand on Zoom?
Not that I see. If there are folks on Zoom that would like to speak, please let us know by raising your hand or sending a chat to the meeting host. Not seeing any takers.
All right, we'll move on to items of council scheduling. Mr. Lucas, would you like to call our attention to anything?
Just a couple of reminders of meetings scheduled for next week. The Jack Hopkins Social Services Committee has its application review meeting on Tuesday. So you all will be getting the quite large packet of applications in the coming days. Of course, next week is a regular session on, on Wednesday. And then the Special Committee on Council Processes has decided to meet next Thursday at 6:00 PM. I believe that's been added to our calendar, but we'll be sending out meeting materials in advance of that meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will just note that I will be looking for a time to hold a council work session on the continued interactions with the CIB and Convention Center expansion. But I'm not ready to schedule that at this time.
May I ask you?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Mr. Lucas, what is the last date that we can dispose of? The ordinance that was just read for first reading, ordinance 2024-07?
Give me a moment.
It's, it's after our, our break for the, for the summer. It's somewhere over our break, I can't remember the exact date.
It's July.
Yeah.
The, the last scheduled council meeting before your summer recess, I believe, is June 18th. That's a Tuesday due to Juneteenth that Wednesday. So that, that's effectively the last meeting on the, on the current schedule that you could act.
Good, thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right, we shall adjourn, thank you.